Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Placerville City Council meeting tonight, June 23rd, 2015. We'll begin with the flag salute. We'll all stand for that, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please. Mayor Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember Clarici.
Here.
Vice Mayor Patton.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
Okay, under announcements and presentations to the public, we have a presentation by Primal Quest on race events scheduled for August 20th through the 28th, 2015.
Hello. My name is Mark Egbert. I'm a board member of Primal Quest and your presenter tonight, and I thank you for having this opportunity to present this year's event. Primal Quest is an expedition-length adventure race that has been called one of the most difficult athletic events in the world and is cited as the most prestigious expedition event in Northern California. We are really happy to come back to South Lake Tahoe this year as the beginning point of the race. There are up to 20 teams that are going to participate in the event. Each team has four different members to it, one being a female, three being any mix of any type of gender. And without any delay, I'm going to let you see a video. And I do have some cards here, some postcards, that I'd like to hand to staff to make available at the counter as well.
The river was so cold, I don't know where I was. It was an out-of-body experience. It was surreal.
I can remember hike, climb up on a big ridge, and I just, I didn't think it was ever going to finish. And I just felt like going to my knees and crying.
I got about halfway up. My webbing got hung up in my ascender really, really bad. Thirty minutes of just emotional terror on the ropes to figure out how to do this, and I was just in tears. If I was by myself, I'd still be hanging out there on that rope. Anybody who says they don't have fear is a liar.
There's a lot of people that don't get what you do because they think that you're just going out there and putting yourself through endless hurt. What are you running from? Why are you doing this to put yourself through this pain? For me, it's not that at all.
That's a really special thing about adventures. You've got to want to be out there. It's an undercurrent of passion that's really an expression of freedom, almost at a cellular level, in your DNA. It's this connectivity of energy. It's almost a spiritual connection that I have with adventure racers.
It was just unbelievable to me that these people would set out on this adventure not knowing where they were going. How cool is that?
For me, when I'm out there racing, I don't think about quitting. I just think about that next stroke, that next rock, that next transition, that bottom of that hill, the top of the hill, wherever it's at, that's all I think about is getting to.
When you're in a kayak, and it's only you and your teammates, and there's nothing else, and just water beneath, and who knows what's ahead because you can't see it? The only thing that you have is that moment, where you are with your teammates. It's such an exceptional gift to be given.
Are we always supposed to be trying to make more money and pay all the bills and all those things that stress you out all the time? Really, does that make any sense? Life is short. It's way too short. Time goes by so fast.
Where else can you go and do something and see parts of the world that are so magnificent? How do you find that anywhere else? I don't know. But I know that I love it, and I want to share that, to see it, experience it, to know
You're not proposing we form a team or anything?
Absolutely.
We wouldn't win.
It's a pretty exciting way to start a meeting, and it's a pretty exciting event. Like I said, we have teams coming from all over the world to participate in the most prestigious adventure race in North America, and it's exciting. It is in August, from August 20th through the 28th. Teams are expected to finish within 10 days. It's a multi-sport event where you can obviously tell from biking, hiking, you know, they don't know what they're going to do. They could climb, they could paddleboard, they can canoe, they could hike, bike, run, swim, you name it. They don't know what they're going to do. They show up on day one, and they have to come fully prepared. We do not allow crews to support the teams, so they have to have all of their life support systems with them. And they have to stay together, and if one person drops out, they all are disqualified. So it's over 450 miles long. And again, what I can say is that we do start in Tahoe. Where we go from there is really something that nobody knows. But we do anticipate that El Dorado County and the City of Placerville is going to be strongly represented, and I really look forward to bringing the event here and showcasing it as much as we possibly can.
When will we find out?
You'll find out if the...
I mean, there is going to be a stop in Placerville.
We may have to coordinate that with staff. But as far as the potential for any type of race team to take advantage of any public information that may be out there, to identify the location of any checkpoints or any type of route designation, is something we can't divulge.
No, and I understand that. I was just thinking, if we'll know ahead of time that we can welcome, that we'll have some kind of a welcome.
So we have a schedule on when we predict racers to travel throughout the entire course, and we can share that with staff and preparations for any type of expected appearance.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds fun for somebody else not mayor.
It is. And one other thing is that we do believe that this is an economic development, you know, opportunity for El Dorado County as well. So there's a lot of sponsors that we have. They're listed right there. It is going to be broadcast live on television. You are going to have an opportunity to follow racers. They have GPS units and GoPros on them, so you'll be able to identify the location of any team and actually tap into their camera and look and see what they're doing. So there is an opportunity there, as well as we're hoping to try to get some local sponsorships as well, help promote it that way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wendy has a question for you. Oh, and John has a question.
Mark, we appreciate you being here tonight. Carol and I had the pleasure of sitting with him on the bus for the Egg Tour last week, and we got talking about this and said, hey, we need to know more about this. But I'd like to introduce you to Lisa Crummett. She's the lovely lady in the second row in the green, and she is the event coordinator for the Placerville Downtown Association. So you might give her your card, because I know you're looking at maybe doing a presentation to the Placerville Downtown Association as well.
Perfect.
Okay, so chat with Lisa, and she can hook you up with that.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, and we look forward to following this. I understand there's a team from El Dorado Hills, is that true?
There's been one team to sign up from El Dorado Hills, that's right.
A local team, that's very cool.
Yes.
John?
This reminds me of the old Eco Challenge.
That's right.
That was done, I've got 20 years ago now, maybe.
The Eco Challenge series is what sort of got the concept to it. Primal Quest emerged from that. We actually held an event in El Dorado County in 2003. It was broadcast live 24 hours a day on ESPN, and it was a really successful race. So they do this, Primal Quest, every year throughout the world. So we're fortunate to hopefully bring it back to this location more often.
Thank you.
Cool. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mark. We didn't have closed session, so I have no closed session report. Adoption of the agenda? Move for adoption?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ceremonial matters, none scheduled. Public comment? This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under specified circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes. The mayor will recognize you, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade an individual's personal privacy. Speakers are limited to three minutes. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under specified circumstances. Please give any written material presented at the meeting to the city clerk for public record. Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask if we have any written communication.
Excuse me. We have one item that you were provided tonight that is in relation to an item on the agenda which we'll be discussing later.
Okay.
In relation to item 8.11.
Eleven, okay. Okay. Oral communication. At this time, I'll ask if anyone in the audience would like to come forward and speak for three minutes or not over three minutes on a certain subject?
I would like some clarification. I was going to ask for something to be pulled from the consent calendar. When do I do that?
Consent calendar comes up next.
And then we have the opportunity to ask if anything will be pulled from it?
Yes.
Okay.
Evelyn Vera Camp, Placerville. I have a request which possibly I should put in writing, and if so, please tell me. I would be very interested in knowing from our representative who sits on the Vehicle Abatement Committee, and that would be Wendy Thomas, is that correct? If sometime in the future you could let us have a report for, say, the past five years or whatever is reasonable, on the income for that committee or group, and the distribution, who has got what from that? Should I give that to you in writing, or is an oral request adequate?
Go ahead.
An oral request is certainly adequate, and we have not met yet for this year, but I can certainly work on that and coordinate with that with our staff.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Forward, please.
Good evening. My name is David Marinon, and I'm representing the El Dorado Pain Reduction Center, and I'm here to petition the council to reverse the prohibition that was put in in 2011 which restricted the opening of medical cannabis facilities in the city. By now, we must all be aware of the lawful, popular, clinical need for accessible medical cannabis, and I'm throwing my support behind Mr. West, who's been a visionary in this field since before Proposition 215, so that's going on more than 20 years now. I can assure you all that we'll abide by any structure that government mandates while trying to ease the burden on the chief of police by utilizing the convenient background checks that are available today. Just a quick written statement here. I'm no stranger to the city. I've owned property and business in El Dorado County, one of which was here in the city limits, and I expect to continue to remain a valuable member of the community. Thank you. So I would like the city council to put this on the agenda for a vote as quickly as possible. Thanks again.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the council. Now we come to the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, before proceeding with the consent calendar, I would request that the council adjourn to closed session. This request is based on a letter that the city received today from a law firm in Southern California, Chatten Brown &amp; Carston LLP. The letter alleges certain facts which could expose the city to, present a significant exposure to litigation, and I would like to have the opportunity to discuss that with the council. It involves one of the matters on the consent calendar, that is item 8.11. So before proceeding with that, I'd like to have the opportunity to discuss the issues related to this letter with the council.
Do I have to have a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion, we adjourn to closed session. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are going to adjourn to closed session. I'm not exactly sure how long we'll be gone, but it shouldn't be too long.
......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Yeah, so she takes the. Went to six or. Oh, yeah, it ain't working. So he gets to charge her all the time.
Yeah.
Oh, he, oh, he. Oh, yeah. Only, so that each letter has to have. To be at least four steps. At least in the. Sorry, right. All kinds of stuff. It was no joke. Charlie Myers. So. Yeah, because you're saying. There. Yeah, there's. And now the expert. No, no, I call him. Um, I'm going to Johnson. I have some new dates. Right now. Then how is their response? Oh, if I call him in, like tomorrow, they're happy to. It's, it's. The document. A higher. They just would have. Potentially. See, most of, most of the things we got to do these now, they go up there. We get a lot of students. So we, we're doing a lot of this. Oh, yeah. The resigning. Um, you're bringing. It's the different colors. And a lot of them try to squash. Because.
Oh, okay.
Um, and then, yeah, and then the color is.
You saw it on the computers.
Yeah. Really? Yeah, and once we grant, they offer.
Oh.
So, so. Yeah. So change, change. Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. And change, change. Um. We're always drawing. Um. The. For finding this thing. Okay, all the A D As and all. See, it's gonna go up there and go on. And it's like, you know, you should take those you're showing.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, they.
Well, a lot of us, I guess.
Yes, because it is.
Hmm.
Yeah. I thought you do that. Not only the. To make sure. Every time internal. Through you. Like just this. So. We did the same. Rest. No, I think we should. Everybody wants to. Yeah, that's. We'll. It, it's. So, I mean, we need something that, I mean, right now, it's, it's, if they, if they install a sign, it's like they have to find. And I'm getting, you know, my talents is if I would experience, experience finding something. We need or. That was. Yeah. Yeah, but I just need. I just. One step. And then they ask, um, the, 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 or test. Yeah, that's. Or. Hi. You're welcome. How much? Is that? They go. So. So it comes to. It's. So. It, it doesn't really sound. I mean. Such as these jobs. I have a search job. Um, you know, to. All the. It would just. It's, yeah, well, it's. It's a day. She's like. Yeah. She's, she always gives me, I think it's, it's.
Yes.
It's like. Yeah, they're kind of something. So there, right there we get. You know, every single day. Uh, they're. Even construction. In every. They cannot. Even that's coming. That's in the. It's. That's. And can she? Do you have? That's like. This is something kind of. Yeah. These, these, they, they, they. We're. It has between eighteen or twenty-four dollars. So. Because. So. Exactly. I guess she had. My. Yeah. We know people that, that, they actually did that, but I get my. Out. Six months. Seriously, yeah. And I think they, 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 they. They. I think. If she did. Yeah, she is. She's. So. Yeah, I just. I think she was. The. We just. She. And then. That was. Right. No, she was. She was. Oh. I mean.
Big bad. Big bad.
She's getting. I don't think she was. That, that is a joke. What do you think? Did you take? Hello. Actually. So. Easy. She was. Right, so the art. And they just. Right. When the. Right. Right. Bringing the person. Right. But then January. When you. Those are. I want. Which.
That was big friend. So. So.
I might. Where is it? A year ago.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I should report out that in this session tonight, um, we discussed issues raised by the letter, but did not take any action.
Okay. Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. Um, consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. Do I have such a request?
I'd like to request that item eight point one one be pulled.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any other requests?
I move for adoption of the consent.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Public comment?
Oh, public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have public comment on any of the other items that we're going to vote on? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Claretti.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patton.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Aye.
Okay, so items pulled from the consent calendar be eleven point, I mean, eight point eleven, I'm sorry. John?
Uh, given, uh, the question that was asked earlier on, and this is an important project for the community, and other mitigating factors, I just think it would be a good idea to just sort of have a little bit more chit chat about this particular item.
Would you like a staff report, Mayor?
Um, yeah, would you like to?
I'll have.
Rebecca?
Can you do a staff report then?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Um, I'm speaking on item eight point one one, which was effectively pulled from the consent calendar. Um, just to give everybody a little bit of a brief recap history on the project. Um, on February twenty-fifth, um, two thousand fourteen of this year, um, the city council approved the Central Main Street rehabilitation project, project to partially repave overlay construct bulbouts and mid-block crosswalks. Repair failed or depressed non-draining sections of the curb, widen the sidewalk, et cetera. Replace, um, repair or replace water sewer drainage facilities as needed and construct bulbouts at Center Street and Stagecoach Alley. In addition, on June tenth of, excuse me, it was February twenty-fifth of two thousand fourteen, my apologies. Um, on June tenth of two thousand fourteen, city council approved a consulting services agreement with R E Y engineers for the engineering and the design of the public outreach services for the Central Main Street Rehabilitation Project, which is capital improvement project number forty-one, four, one, two. On January thirteenth, two thousand fifteen of this year, council approved funding for the phase two pavement rehabilitation and approval of the phase two conceptual construction budget for the project. On February twenty-fourth of two thousand fifteen, the city council approved a construction contract with Vince Aguero for the construction of the phase one A water line replacement project. And then face, um, excuse me, on, um, um, May twelfth of two thousand fifteen, council authorized staff to release the bid documents for phase two. Phase two is being the pavement rehabilitation portion of the project. Um, council gave us permission to release the contract documents for bidding. Um, then again, on, um, phase one B bid documents, um, as approved on, uh, February twenty-fourth of this year for release, excuse me, um, January thirteenth of this year for release, um, included phase one B, which was the sewer lining project. It's C I P P lining, which is cast in, um, poured place, uh, excuse me. Is that right? Yeah. Cat, excuse me, cured in place pipe. And, um, and that project was then effectively released out for bid. The bid documents were, um, released on May twenty-ninth. Um, their estimated value, um, was, uh, less than seventy-five thousand dollars, and so the city was, staff was able to solicit informal bidding, which we did. And, uh, we did solicit informal bidding from five different construction companies, and we received, um, just because of the timing of the year, it seems like everybody was pretty busy. Uh, we did receive one bid and open bids, uh, for that one bid on June twelfth, two thousand fifteen, which is why, one of the main items, why we're coming here before you, it's more this evening, is to, um, award the contract for phase one B for the sewer C I P P lining. Um, the one bidder was, um, S A K Construction. We did, uh, go through their bid, and we found no irregularities. We checked multiple references from here to Southern California and Reno, and, uh, were found to be in good standing and, uh, um, high, high appraisal from, uh, multiple agencies, so that's good. And, um, as such, based on that, we are recommending, um, uh, award of that contract for S A K Construction. Um, now, the, another item that we're requesting approval for is for consulting services agreement, uh, number, amendment number three with the R E Y contract and the amount to not to exceed two hundred and twenty-nine thousand fifty-five dollars. And the reason for this amendment is, um, their original contract included, um, conceptual preliminary design and, and some final design. Um, their first amendment included additional design, and then their second amendment included the construction management for phase one only of the project, which is the sewer and the water portions of the project. Phase two being the pavement rehabilitation, we have not yet secured, um, services for, uh, construction management, so that's the purpose of this amendment. Um, in addition to that, uh, portions of that amendment amount do, um, account for cost overruns associated with, um, the construction management efforts for the phase one A water line project. Um, primarily, it was, it's night work, and night work is hard, and in terms of coordination and efforts, um, you know, when you do a daytime job, you usually have somebody in the office during the day running the paperwork, doing the, the general project paperwork, um, upkeep and, and management of the project while you have somebody out in the field. Here, we had people out in the field at night, and then we had people during the day running the project, so essentially it became an around-the-clock twenty-four-hour process. And so, um, uh, you know, they, uh, they did, uh, provide us a pretty low quote on the first amendment, um, trying to be conservative, and then found that we were, you know, a little bit overly conservative, and so it was, all their, um, they have met our expectations that we, uh, requested and needed to manage the project, and I believe that there was favorable, um, uh, opinion from various businesses on Main Street too, as to, with regard to how, um, R E Y managed the, the project and the construction efforts as well. So we, we concurred with that. Um, and then, uh, an additional item that we're requesting approval for is, um, for a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar budget appropriation, um, from fiscal years two thousand thirteen and fourteen and fourteen, fifteen for the Main Street Rehabilitation Project. Um, and this is, uh, in the form of, um, uh, R S T P funds, I believe. Correct? Yes. From Dave? Yes. And also, um, approving a budget appropriation of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-three thou, uh, it's four hundred and sixty-three dollars from Measure H Fund for the phase two project. Um, because of the attempt to reduce impacts to businesses, there were, the project was phased, as you know. And portions of those work, as far as the utility work goes, with relocating the fire hydrants, the fire hydrants are currently located out in the sidewalk, and in phase two, they will be relocated out into the bulb out. Well, we couldn't relocate them out into the bulb out until phase two, because the bulb out doesn't exist yet, and so that's why we deferred a small portion of the water work, um, attributed to that. So, and that kind of covers the meat of the topic. Um, I have, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions, comments from council? Okay, maybe later.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item to please come forward and remember the three-minute time limit, please. Please come forward.
Sue Taylor, thanks for pulling this from the consent calendar. Um, and I, um, want to thank you for this project that you've been working on it at night, that made it really a lot better for Main Street. And, um, you know, I was involved in the workshops that we had, and I'm sorry that I couldn't make the May twelfth meeting, I was out of the state, but I did submit a sixteen-page document, um, trying to bring up some elements and issues that I hope that you read, because I spent weeks on that document. Um, we're at this point, and I want to say that I'd really like to see the street repaved and the sewer replaced. I want that known when I start this, but I still have concerns with many of the elements of the rest of this project. Um, in the public workshops, um, the public asked for elements that would be adopted that didn't come from a catalog, and in the end, that's what we were given. I've asked the consultants about the corners in our building, because, um, originally, um, it was told that there wouldn't be bulbouts and ramps changed on our building corners, but then as this went along, we have, I think, three, and we have elements, um, that are going to cause an issue with our foundation, with the, uh, meters that are there, and I haven't got clear answers from the people that are working on this. Or, um, you know, I've asked structurally how they reduce the side alley to thirteen feet. Um, I asked about it, could we do a cooler surface on, um, black asphalt, brand-new black asphalt is really hot, and with all the great events that we have down there, wouldn't it be cool if we had something cooler? Um, I asked about an alternative for A D A access, um, that we could use our historic building codes, and I was told that that wouldn't be possible, but yet the city allowed the same consultant to waive the, um, A D A standards on a hotel in the city. So, um, going through those, uh, I thought were simple things to discuss, weren't really answered. The, I've been a little frustrated, and, um, then we went from there to they were going to put this, these items on a survey. I asked, how do you get good, um, discussions with the global survey? I was told, and then I asked, um, how would this be weighed? And I was told that it wouldn't be really weighed, it, it depended on the council, that it didn't even have to be weighed at all, that there, they would look at everything, and then when I watched the video for the, when you approved this, um, it seemed like that was the whole basis for the approval. Sixty-six votes on a, um, survey, that we don't know where they came from. So, um. So, what I'm hoping to see, that you separate these items that are on the agenda, no one has a problem with the sewer being fixed, you know, as long as it's not moving earth and artifacts underground, and those things aren't being impacted, it's a great thing. You know, separate that item from the rest of them and move forward with that. And then maybe hold off on approving Phase 2 until we fine-tune just a few things. I think it could take a couple of weeks if the city was willing to do that. And I would like to see the final decisions live. It's really hard, you look at the survey, and it just tells you the things that were voted on, but not what it is. The pictures are gone. I had to scan my old document that I got from one of the workshops to show people what the pictures are. I would ask that, and in the 16-page document I worked weeks on...
Sue, you want to, you want to wind it up?
I do, but I just, if I could just go over a few of the things really fast, what I incorporated in that. I asked that the, when they replace the concrete, that it matches the existing concrete that's already there, you're getting a really splotchy sidewalk. We mentioned the asphalt. I asked, could we just let the building owners put their own benches out so that they're not, that would save the city money, and each merchant or owner could come up with their own idea. Bicycle racks, I asked, where are they going? How do you decide what they're going to look like unless you know actually where they're going to be placed? I asked for cast iron on these elements rather than plastic detectable warning material. That is, I think it's really sad we're using plastic on our historic Main Street instead of cast iron. Garbage cans, I don't think you've resolved that. And the other thing in my document was talking about stone and patterns that match some of the existing patterns you have, like the bridge on Spring Street. You have some really cool-looking gold slate rock that would be kind of cool to put into some of these things you're going to put. So, I would say Phase 2 is a little bit fuzzy. Your cost in there is 2.4 million, your funding is 1.8 million. The, there's some other elements that it'd be nice to spend a little bit of time, I would be happy to volunteer to work with somebody to address this stuff. And I understand the urgency in moving forward to repave the street. I also realize that we only get one shot at this. I would encourage you to take the time to do it right. Any questions or discussion?
Thank you, Sue.
Okay.
Okay, I just got a message that our timer is not working. Go ahead and come on forward. So, we're going to keep, oh, Mr. Morris is going to keep track of it up here, so.
I'm a...
Good evening.
Good evening. Jim Fisher with REY Engineers, project manager on the Main Street project. Just wanted to say I'm here tonight, I can answer any questions you might have. Just wanted to respond to a couple of the previous comments. I probably should start with just an apology. When you get towards the end of a project, trying to get bid documents out, you aren't necessarily as responding as actively to some of the public comments. I'd say that we actually addressed quite a few of those, but probably I didn't communicate them. So, I'll probably, I'll take a moment just to kind of go through a couple of them. The corner of the Taylor's Building with the foundation sticking out, we've actually taken the step to now replace the sidewalk all the way around the side of their building, down Center Street. We're going to widen the sidewalk there so that the, we still meet the ADA requirements and avoid their foundation. We looked into the colored asphalt, found that it was actually too expensive, we're already having difficulty with how, how busy contractors are right now. Adding in another element like that would have increased the cost of the, of the project. We looked, in response to the, you know, waiving the ADA guidelines on the hotel project, I don't believe that's really accurate. In fact, the city did a very good job of making sure they're enforcing it with the use of the shuttle. It was more of an interpretation of the guidelines, not necessarily waiving them. I find it interesting, too, that the council actually rejected one of the more popular items that the survey showed. The survey actually had the bike racks as one of the more, largest percentage, and you guys actually took it upon yourselves to listen to the feedback of people in the room, and actually rejected that item. We consulted with two or three contractors on matching the existing concrete. We found that it just wasn't going to be possible due to how many varied types of concrete are out there today. They actually, the architect decided that actually putting in new concrete unadulterated would actually match what's out there better than trying to darken or match what's out there, because you're going to find that you're just not going to match. So, you may match in one, in front of one store, you take that same concrete two stores down, and it's, no longer applies, and then you don't know how that concrete's going to age now, because you've put in admixtures into the concrete. We looked at the cast iron detectable warning, it's a, it's a product we use on Center Street. However, this project has much more unique curves to it. While the cast iron does come in radiuses, there, there are only certain types of radiuses. This project has several different radiuses, several different angles with the truncated domes. We've gone with a, yes, it's a plastic material, but it's, it's actually going to be anchored in, wet-set into the concrete. You're not going to feel like the flimsy class, plastic material you see that sometimes is glued on and, you know, applied after the fact. It is going to be a brick red color, matching, you know, the ultimate goal of the, of the concrete crosswalks, so it's not going to be your, the only yellow one we're actually proposing is up at Bedford to match the yellow one that's across the way. All the remaining ones will be a brick red color or a maroon. We're going to have the contractor give us a sample, we're going to take it out to the site, see how it looks, and go from there. And then also with the garbage cans, currently, they're not part of, of the, the second phase. So, I hope I, I caught all those. Be willing to answer any questions, and certainly will be available for, for any responding to any other feedback.
Okay, hang on.
First off, Jim, you don't have to apologize for anything. My experience during the course of this project and talking to a number of shop owners and property owners on Main Street, one of the better parts of that project was your organization and you and, who was the other, the young lady, Katie?
Carly.
Carly, yes. Anyway, rave reviews, so you don't need to apologize for anything. And I think that your responses were right on.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We might call you back, so. Anyone else?
Thank you, City Council. My name is Sue Reese. I'm one of the partners at Kelsey's Needle Crafts, I'm a merchant on Main Street. And the merchants that I associate with are looking forward to getting this project done. It's, it's long overdue. I respect history, and I think we need to retain a certain amount of our historical integrity. However, I feel that we've gotten to a safety point, and we're well beyond that. And I cite the example of a woman who fell in front of our business during a street event, broke her arm, not a fracture, compound, out the, out the side of her arm, the bone. And I don't think the city wants to continue to maintain that type of street that could create some really nasty liability. Our street events are paramount to our success downtown, they bring thousands of people down here. And then more than once, I've had people comment about, when are they going to fix the streets? So, I commend the city for taking this on, and hope we can move forward rapidly on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else?
I'm Richard Wolf with Winter Hill Olive Oil, and again, I join in Sue's comment, I commend the city and the process that you've gone through. We were a little nervous starting this project, but you have performed the city, its contractors have performed extremely well, keeping the disruption to our businesses and to our customers down to a minimum. It's the 21st century, and although we have historical, possible historical elements under the ground, I think the ground has probably been dug many, many times. We, after all, we're replacing the sewer system. The resurfacing in this Phase 2 would be less disruptive, I think, than, than what we've already gone through in terms of risk to historical elements in the dirt. The city has shown, I think, considerable caution in looking at the finishes, what we can afford. I encourage you to move forward as quickly as you can to finish the project. I would ask, though, that you look at some safety elements. I have an interest in ADA issues, and I'm really encouraged that we're going to be putting those in. We do have a kind of a bootlegged ADA ramp right in front of our shop. We've had two customers now who have driven up onto it and hit the garbage can, and then said, we didn't even know we were driving on the sidewalk, because of the ADA, and it blocks water and so on. And I'm looking forward to that being fixed. Please, you know, move forward, move forward with respect to our historical elements, but move forward. It is the 21st century, and we need some standardized safety issues addressed on the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else?
Carl Hagan, business owner in the city limits and live in the city. I, I want to call your attention to a letter that was, I saw that Cleve Morris was copied on, and has given you a copy of, from Mark Acuna. And indication is that, again, we've been working on this streetscape for 25-plus years. It goes back, it was, the number of items and the things we've got that we've improved since I've lived in the city are pretty amazing, and it was, had to do with the streetscape. I'd call your attention to, there used to be Cobra Head streetlights on Main Street. There used to be utility poles on Main Street. Would we like to go back to 1905 or 1930 when we had utility poles? I think the Telegraph Company had one utility pole, the Phone Company had another one, and the, the electrical utility also had one. The streets were dirt. It's time to move forward. The only thing that we're going to disturb when they repave Main Street is they're going to take that grass out of the center little ditch that people are tripping on. So, we've been working on this. I, as a, as a former city council member, worked on this project. We found a way to fund it. Funding street repairs is extremely difficult. Let's move forward, let's get this done right and do it right. They're not going to be digging up the sewers, they're going to do a lining, interior lining, that is going to be just less disruptive than anything, and you saw it cost about $75,000 compared to about, I guess, $600,000 or $800,000 we just spent on the water lines. So, I think they're very careful about it. Sue Taylor's building is actually going to get a new sidewalk and a couple of legitimate ADA ramps. I think she should be thrilled with that. I'm just putting some in front of my office building at my expense, and you could spend $20,000 real quick, just on one truncated area, a couple of parking spots that are ADA-qualified, that's got two or three ramps. I mean, the reality is, if she had gone forward with her construction in a timely manner, she would have had to put those in along that whole side street. Center Street is being completed at the behest of the city and at our expense, not at Sue Taylor's expense. So, let's design it the proper way, let's do it correct, not slamming what she's done. But I'm just saying, if they had been in a, in a very rapid succession in her construction project, she would have been at this point before we were. So, I think she should be very glad that we're putting a new, new sidewalk in front of, and on the side of her building, a new, new court curb gutter area. So, anyway, that's where I stand.
Thank you, Carl.
Evelyn Veerkamp, Placerville, two comments. One is, I would really like to know, and this is not something I believe can be provided or would be provided, but in the city's overall planning for all the projects which are known to the planners, what are the historic elements of Placerville which are in fact sacrosanct? What parts of Placerville will be preserved that are historic besides having a sign at the outskirts saying Historic Placerville? It seems to be disappearing. And this is not a plea for you to slow down your projects, abandon your projects, or anything else, but there are some of us who are concerned that Historic Placerville is vanishing. As far as Carl Hagan's comment that Sue Taylor should be pleased, I'm sure she's pleased about any money the city is saving her. I'm sure she also would have been pleased if $22,000 worth of damage had not been done to her building by the city project.
Next.
Since the speaker can only come up to the podium once, Sue asked me to come up and ask on her behalf...
You want to state your name, please?
Lori Parlin. This was the first that she'd heard about the sidewalk and the widening and all that, and so, she is asking for an opportunity to meet with the consultant and, and work on those plans with them. She's not seen it at all, which was stated here tonight, and I think that's a fair request. So, I'm making that on her behalf, since can't come back up to the podium.
Thank you, Lori. Anyone else?
Steve Noe, Placerville. I like the fact that we're finally going to get some new streets and get the sewer fixed. Yay. That's part of what we have been paying for through Measure H, and I'm glad it's going to good use. The real, my main comment here is, you know, we're talking about getting this project rolling, and if Sue or the business owners along Main Street would like to make changes, let it be at their expense, not at our expense. We've got our plan, move forward with it. If they choose to interact with the consultant or the contractor, if they have approved, you know, if they can work with the contractor in making changes with the city's approval, then let them pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else?
I'm Candy Acuna, I live in Placerville. I just want to say that, you know, before we ever even got here, before I was born, this county underwent a lot of changes. One of them was Highway 50. When Highway 50 was put in, a lot of things were destroyed. We just have to continue to push forward, push past people who want us to live in the past, during the 21st century. And when we do have our property, take care of it, put windows in it so that water can't get in it. You have to, I work for insurance company, defense firms, you know, you need to protect your own property. And I, I just, I find that kind of offensive, quite honestly. But we just need to just keep pushing forward and keep, keep at it, and realize that there's going to be old stuff buried in the ground everywhere. There's old stuff buried in the ground. It's the last house I built off Country Club Drive. It was valueless. It was old wood, it was old, you know, it was old farmhouse. There's nothing historic there. Anything that was really historic is buried under Highway 50, and it was done before we got here.
Thanks. Thank you, Candy. Anyone else?
Good evening. Everybody says that the project should go forward, that the street, desperate, needs to be repaved, that's not in dispute.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Beg your pardon?
Introduce yourself, please.
Kirk Smith.
Thank you.
The, in fact, the public told you that a number of times several years ago when you were pushing the streetscape plan for the roundabout, and people said, we desperately need to repave the Ivy House parking lot, and folks would say, yeah, but what about Main Street? So, it's not in dispute, you should do it. You had a wonderful conference on June 4th, and it was an exceptional job. Long after council members and candidates left, I commended the staff for having done it. You made a wonderful presentation about the value of having it be an historic district, no matter how things, you know, kind of go away over the years. And yet, you're going to have all that benefit possibly be damaged when you make these major renovations and updates. So, that's a concern. You don't have any of the protection methods that are in place, that was called for on June 4th, that said is necessary in order to keep that advantage of having an historic district. in order to keep that advantage of having an historic district. I thought the comment about Lincoln Highway or the highway coming by here was interesting because the city did throw away more than a dozen Lincoln Highway markers that were buried in a landfill. There's only four persons who were able to retrieve four of them now. That's something that's pointed out by people who go around, or the historians giving tours of the city. When it came to getting information, on the first meeting that we were attending for the four public meetings, we were told about historic steps that would be taken. People asked, "Well, what if you find historic objects?" And we were promised that they would be safeguarded, and there was a recording made of that. That wasn't kept. When we came before you, I brought, right after discovering, material that was buried under Main Street. And you had a plumber tell you, made a promise to your face and said, "It's going to remain there over at the mosquito assemblage area." And it wasn't, it's been removed. You had a right to do it because you gave him salvage rights. You gave him the right to take the property. And it was something done knowingly, because the reason is, as described by a city official, is we didn't want to cause delay for the public or for merchants. Well, it didn't have to cause delay. But you did it for that reason. You knew that in the case of Folsom, when they made all those major changes down there, one of the reasons it was delayed is because Indian bones and artifacts were found. And so, there were orders to stop doing the work. So, there were bones found, and no matter what kind of exemptions you get, the law requires you to stop work. But you didn't do that, and it was done deliberately. So, you gave the property, our heritage, away. You gave it to a plumber, and he comes in here and tells you things like, "There were just a few boots there." There wasn't a few boots, there was more than 40. And that was all on the surface. And then I read a city official who, in the paper, says that-
Kirk, do you want to-
Wrap it up? Yeah, I'll come back next week and, next time, and give you some more. I'll give it to you in writing. It's the best method. Because you didn't take steps to preserve it before, so the public has every reason to be anxious about what you're doing now. You're making major changes that alter the historic landscape of the city. They do affect value. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Taylor gets a chance, because I think your rules, aren't they, that you don't respond to what other people did? And so, if you did make some comments, like, does Sue Taylor should be able to respond? Like, pointing out that when Carl was mayor, she did at her expense, they wanted to put in sidewalks at their expense, and Mayor Hagan would not allow it. You voted against it because it was determined to be too modern. And yet, later, when you came back for streetscape-
Okay, thank you.
Did she get a chance to respond to that?
Thank you, thank you, Kirk. Next person, please. Anyone else have any comments? Seeing no one, I will bring it back to council. At this time, John, would you like to respond now, or would the council-
Actually, I don't think there's anything I need to respond to, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council have any remarks? Any comments, council?
I think I have a question, maybe for staff, or, it's regarding the adverse change in significance of historic resources. And there's talk about that, about the history of our town. So, if there's something dug up, like a piece of old shoe or a piece of wood, whether it's under a house or under Main Street, would that be considered a historic resource?
Not necessarily. It really depends. Just not every old object is a historic resource. You have to have somebody with the ability to identify what is truly a resource versus, you know, a piece of old stuff.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Actually, yes. Not to discount whatever someone happens to dig up in any particular part of town, but I have a house over, I used to live in a place over on Myrtle, which is part of the Inches West subdivision. It was incorporated in 1905. My little house was built, parts of it were built right after that. And every time I went and totaled my yard, I found things. I found cups and saucers and little irons, like those old timey irons, they weigh like five pounds. You heated them up on the stove. I use them as doorstops, I found like five or six of them. It doesn't mean that they're not cool, and it doesn't mean that they may not even be historic. But it's sort of like, you know, after you've found a few shoes, and after you've found some wood, and you've found some of this other stuff, for one thing, is it already in some museum somewhere that we already have? We're not going to go back into the ground with this project. We are, we are done with that part of it. So, any of these things now are topics for another day, perhaps. The sewer project is very non-invasive, is from what I understand. And then, of course, we'll be paving Main Street, which means they're going to dig down X number of inches and replace the pavement and do some other nice things. So, you know, although some of this might be very interesting, the other thing, too, is those ships have kind of sailed, and we can talk about that for future things. But I agree with a number of the speakers. I think that we need to move forward with this project.
Wendy, did you have a comment?
I do, thank you. First, I have a question for staff. It's possible, the action before us tonight is not to approve Phase Two and worry about the contract of that work. And, so, when we get to that point, is it possible to put language in that, that if they should, you know, encounter something as they dig, you know, dig down the street, that we could safeguard that?
May I clarify something?
Yes.
Okay. You actually have already approved Phase Two. You did that in January of this year.
Okay.
What you will be doing, and what you're doing all along, is implementing the project with certain approvals that need to be made from time to time, so that the project can be implemented. The next one coming up after tonight will probably be awarding the contract for construction. Again, the project's been approved, I just wanted to-
Actually, that's what I meant, and thank you for clarifying, approving the, yeah, awarding the contract for construction. So, could we put some language in there, safeguarding it, should they come upon anything?
Yes, and actually, it's already included. It's part of the Caltrans standard specs for 2010. So, what happens is, when you put out bid documents, you start with a book like this. But in reality, you need this book. This one's the one that's written by the lawyers. And included in that are items that particularly address cultural, archaeological resources, historical resources, et cetera. This book references this book and thereby default makes it part of the contract. There are items within this contract, within the big red book that is referred to, that address those. And it does speak to archaeological resources, which are categorized as tools, tool fragments, hearth and food remains, structural remains, and human remains. We did not find any of those in 1A.
Okay. And according to that language, whose property, you know, is it, should something be discovered?
Technically speaking, the dirt becomes the ownership of the contractor. And the reason why that is done is to relinquish some of the liability of hazardous waste that could be found in there. That's kind of where it came from, why they make it the property of the contractor versus the agencies. Now, I have never in my life, although I, actually, that's not true. I have heard of one instance where it was the, you know, "Hey, this is our dirt, no, this is our dirt." And then the reason why was because the contractor had the dirt spoken for, for a different project, to be import on a different job. And so, he actually did need the dirt and was trucking it to another job to do the import for that work. But Vince Aguero Construction, right up from the get-go, stated that, "Hey, look, we'll give you guys anything you want. You just have to tell us what you want." And so, they, I mean, we did collect things from the piles. We do have things that we will be giving to the museum that we are retaining in City Hall. They're occupying a cube right now, much to Pierre's dismay.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that, Rebecca, I appreciate that. And I think, moving forward, it's really important that we not confuse opinion and speculation with facts. And, you know, it's, we need to be, we've worked so hard and for several years to find the funding, and I think our public process has been superb. There has been ample opportunities for people to weigh in on all phases of this. And this council and staff have weighed all the comments, and I'm looking forward to getting on to this project.
We've had workshops.
Lots of workshops.
Lots of workshops.
And we've made a lot of adjustments-
Yes, we have.
Based on the public's comment.
Based on comment, right, I agree.
Okay, I just have a few comments, and one of them was to thank all of my fellow council members for their support of the project that, as Council, or ex-Mayor Hagan reported, has been 25 years in the making. And it didn't just start with four public hearings in the last five years, it started with public hearings 25 years ago. But tonight, what we're actually approving is the construction contract for the sewer line. I mean, it's just the least invasive of any part of this project. And then, and then also the construction management services. So, I don't want the council to get lost on that we just, all we're doing are those, we're being asked to look at those and either approve them or disapprove them at our will. I think that our engineering staff has done a phenomenal job, and my hat goes off to Rebecca Neves for all she's done and the amount of time she's been out there on the street. And Vince Aguero Construction for the amount of interfacing that they've done with the public one-on-one, which is really admirable, considering some of the things that they've had to deal with. I think that it's this council's job to represent the entire city, not just one property owner, not just one business district. Although, this council has made it perfectly clear that this business district is the cornerstone of our heritage. And I think it was Evelyn, was it Evelyn that said, "The historical elements that we consider sacrosanct." Well, Main Street's pretty historical, and it's pretty special to a lot of us up here, as are many portions of our city. But that doesn't mean that we can ignore our responsibility as the governing body to take care of the assets that we have. And one of the biggest assets that we have is Main Street and the sidewalks that bring our, bring business to our businesses. So, I would move that we approve staff's recommendations for 8.11, and we approve the construction contract, SAC Construction. We approve the consulting services agreement, and we authorize the city manager to execute said documents.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please. Mayor Borelli. Aye. Councilmember Clarici.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patton.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone who contributed to this little discussion. Number nine, no, 10, ordinances and unscheduled public hearings. Adopt a resolution establishing the appropriation limit, parentheses, GAN, for fiscal year 2014-2015 and determining compliance with Government Code Section 7910. Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This item is routine in nature, it's something that you take action on annually. Section 7910 of the State Government Code requires each local government agency to establish an appropriation or GAN limit by resolution. Each year, the city is required to adjust its GAN limit by both the prior year per capita personal income increment and the prior year change in population. The change in your per capita personal income was actually negative .23%, and the change in population was positive .9%, minor adjustments. Based on these factors, the fiscal year 1415 GAN limit is calculated to be $19,224,838. The general fund proceed revenue, subject to the GAN limit, is $5,337,452, leaving $13,887,386 of unused appropriation limit. Once again, Placerville is well within its GAN limit. And with that, we request that the council adopt the resolution establishing the GAN limit for fiscal year 1415 and determining compliance with Government Code Section 7910.
Comments? You know what, Dave, I'm sorry. I just still don't get this. And this is only the ninth time I've been through this. But I just not quite, I'm not sure if there's anybody else in my shoes. I know, as if it's routine, why do we? And if we're not, if we don't meet the, you know, I don't, I-
Yeah, what this, this goes back to the days of Proposition 13. This was one of the measurements in ensuring that government agencies aren't overtaxing its populace. And so, if the city, for example, had a revenue limit or a GAN limit where the proceeds exceeded the GAN limit, it could create, trigger a situation where you would have to refund taxes to the public. But we're in a situation where we have a difference of about $13 million, we're way below. And so, we can demonstrate that we're operating well within our means.
Okay, so it's just a, okay.
And we're not overtaxing the public.
I wish we were in that category.
It would be nice, no.
All right. This time, I'll ask if anyone from the public would like to comment on this. Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to council.
Public hearing.
Oh, I opened it, and now I'm closing it. I thought that's what I said.
I move staff's recommendation. I'll second.
Okay, 11.2, adopt a resolution approving- Okay. Roll call vote, please. Mayor Borelli. Aye. Councilmember Clarici.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patton.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Aye.
Okay, 11.2, adopt a resolution approving the engineers' reports confirming assessments and the diagrams as are described in full detail in the reports on file with the city clerk, directing NBS to prepare and submit the levy assessments to Eldorado County for placement on the fiscal year 2015-2016 secured property tax roll. And confirming the adoption of the resolution shall constitute the levy of assessments for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2015, and ending June 30th, 2016 pursuant to Section 22631 of the Act. Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is also a routine item in nature and is Part II of a two-part series. Part I occurred at your meeting held May 12th, when the council adopted a resolution declaring its intention to provide the annual levy and collection of assessments for the city landscaping, lighting, and maintenance districts as required by the State Streets and Highways Code. Part II requires the council to hold a public hearing, which is scheduled for tonight, and adopt a resolution approving two engineers' reports in your agenda packet. The city currently has two LLMD districts, Orchard Hill and Cottonwood Park. The engineers' reports for both districts present status quo budgets and levy amounts. The current level of assessments for both districts are adequate in covering the costs for operating and maintaining the districts for fiscal year 1516. And we respectfully request that the council approve the 2015-2016 LLMD assessments by adopting the resolution as presented.
Okay, questions, comments from council? I will open it up to public and ask if anyone would like to comment on any, on this. Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to council.
May for adoption.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mayor Borelli. Aye. Councilmember Clarici.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patton.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Aye.
Okay, discussion action items. 12.1, budget adoption. Mr. Warren.
I'm back. Over the, over the past six months-
You're busy tonight.
The city's budget team, which is comprised of the city manager and all department heads, developed both the proposed operating and capital improvement program budgets that embrace the city council's established fiscal policies and overall goals and objectives, considering the financial resources available at this time. As part of the budget development process, the council held a capital improvement program and capital outlay budget development workshop on April 7th, an operating budget and capital improvement program budget development workshop on May 21st, and a budget open hearing on June 9th of this year to ensure transparency for the public as well as continual refinement of the budget before you tonight. Both the proposed operating budget and CIP budget include the same expenditure assumptions as what was discussed at the budget open hearing held on June 9th, including salary and benefit commitments to employees, all three alternative service level requests, capital outlay items, and conference training and travel expenses, with the adjustments that the council requested on June 9th. The forecasted level of Bradley Burn sales tax for fiscal year 1516 has been increased slightly since your open hearing due to favorable performance in the quarter ended March 31st, 2013, which exceeded 13% year-over-year, as well as the State Board of Equalization's forecast dated May 29th, 2015, for statewide sales tax growth over the next 12 months. The proposed budget amount for Bradley Burn sales tax is $59,464, higher than what was discussed on June 9th. The proposed operating budget is balanced, including the planned uses of reserves, and totals $17,833,537, of which $7,934 for general fund uses. totals $17,833,537, of which $7,934 for general fund uses. The general fund did experience a $417,000 surplus in 2013-2014, and we anticipate that it will experience approximately $139,000 surplus for this fiscal year. The proposed general fund budget assumes the use of $90,000 of these surpluses or general fund balance, which is a one-time source, to afford $122,000 in capital outlay or equipment budget, which is a one, which is one-time in nature. The proposed CIP budget totals $180,000 for Measure H Fund for two new projects, including Elm Court water line replacement and the Conrad Street sewer line replacement. It's important to note that your budget is a living document that can be revised at any time. I would like to publicly thank the budget team, city employees, and the city council for once again, working together to balance this year's budget, which is a responsible plan that will help ensure the city remains financially sound. I would also like to thank artist Craig Kosky for sharing his image of the downtown that adorns the cover of the budget this year. With that, I respectfully request that the council approve the proposed 2015-2016 operating budget and capital improvement program budget as presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? I have one, one question. You said the surplus was what, more than, it was 50-some thousand, more than we expected?
The surplus?
Uh-huh.
In 2013-2014, it was $417,000.
No, you said because of the sales tax that...
The sales tax, the sales tax, the, we, we built in an additional $59,464 in the sales tax.
Okay.
That's higher than what we presented to you on June 9th.
Right, right, right.
Correct.
Because the sales tax came in.
The real, because the actual was...
There's actually three pieces. One is, um, we had better performance the first quarter of this year than we anticipated. Secondly, the state adjusted its forecast statewide, which we use as part of our forecasting model. The third is, it was the first quarter for the new Chrysler Dodge Ram Jeep dealership and it performed better than we anticipated.
That's what I wanted you to announce.
We're very thankful.
I'm so happy about that. So where does that surplus go?
We, um, yeah, the higher sales tax, what it did is the amount of fund balance that you, that is planned to be used for the equipment purchases.
Okay.
Shrunk. So instead of over $90,000, or excuse me, um, that entire amount, that $122,000 in equipment coming from fund balance, we are, um, this budget assumes $90,000.
Great.
So about 100, or excuse me, $32,000 less in fund balance. So it's coming in, 32,000 more out of operating funds from sales tax.
Good. Okay, any other questions, comments? Carol?
Go for it.
Carol?
Go for it. Well, I'm doing it in my head, I'm going, okay, you tick off 39,000 just now, but I thought you said we had 59,000 in extra, you increased our revenue by 50-some-odd thousand. I'm sorry, I don't have the budget report in front of me. And then, so you're only saying, well, you're only taking 30,000 off, but why didn't you just take the full, apply the full 59?
Great question. There were some smaller adjustments and I didn't want to get into too much detail.
Right.
Because we've gone through a lot of time. But one of the things, for example, the chief informed us that our state prison realignment funds, uh, there's going to be some adjustments to the formula and we thought we were going to receive about $30,000. It's looking like we're only going to receive about $18,000. On the expenditure side of the ledger, uh, we looked at our actual personnel, there were some little tweaks here and there, people, uh, moving through the salary steps, adjustments there, um, so we made some refinements in that area as well, which cost a little more money.
So the 59, whatever the extra was, is all eaten up, is what you're saying?
That's correct. Sorry.
You're not going to Tahiti.
Well, I was kind of, what I was thinking is that we did tap into our reserve funds and I was wondering if those would be replaced with this. That's kind of what I was hoping for and thinking.
This does assume a $75,000 transfer from your reserve for economic uncertainties to your general fund to fund your contingency. So if you were to remove that transfer or lessen that transfer, that would increase the amount coming out of the general fund balance. Keep in mind that Measure J is repaying 77,000 back to that fund, so it's netting a little over $2,000 to the fund. I mean, I'd rather not have to tap into it, but I think it's a good measure this year. And at mid-year, if it looks like the general fund can afford the entire contingency, I would recommend to you that you, um, remove that transfer from the reserve to the general fund.
When is the next budget report?
Typically, the mid-year report goes to the council, um, the second meeting in February or the first meeting in March.
Mayor, I just want to note, with those changes, though, we are still fully maintaining that 15 percent reserve that we talked to you about at our last meeting in our general fund.
Okay, that's what I was going for. Just to make sure.
Correct, yep.
Any other questions, comments from council? You do, okay. Anyone from the public care to come forward with questions or comments on this issue?
Kirk Smith, just a question about the notice. I think I got a mailing on Sunday about the budget coming in the mail. Mr. Warren does a great job, but the question was about whether that covers the Brown Act, if we've got an adequate notice. I might be just the only one that didn't read the 127 pages plus that came in the email, but that's the question. And I don't know if he gave us two more weeks, whether I'd read that, given all the other stuff to read, but it's just a question that would be helpful to know.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close it and bring it back to council and ask for a answer.
Dave, help me out here, but there's no requirement to notice the adoption of the budget at this point, the public hearing at the last meeting, but even that does not require us to mail notices to anyone. If you're on our distribution list for our agendas, you got notified as a part of that, but there's no notification requirement in terms of, other than our normal agenda notification process.
Not to my knowledge. There's no law that requires the city to have to, um, notice every resident of the city regarding the budget adoption unless, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Driscoll, but that's my understanding.
And we started this budget process, Dave, in, in February. We've, this is like the fifth time this has come before the council, all through the process and including many public work, at least a, I remember a four-hour, uh, public budget workshop.
That's correct. You've held three public meetings regarding this document or the development of this document, and the council routinely is discussing its budget regarding capital projects, the Measure J reports, so on and so forth.
And we've been talking about it with other, in our other meetings, things that we would like to see changed and we've been told how the changes were made, so.
So this information is, is not new as of, as of this week.
Okay.
So with that, I move that we adopt a resolution approving and adopting...
I, I brought it back.
I'm sorry. I move that we adopt a resolution approving and adopting the proposed fiscal year 2015-2016 operating budget and capital improvement program budget as presented.
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Mayor Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patton.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Aye.
12.2. Authorize staff to conduct a community survey for the use of future Measure H sales tax receipts by distributing a paper survey with the July 2015 utility bills and providing an online survey option. Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I swear, this is my last item. The, kind of a recap, the city's sewer system is comprised of 50 miles of collection line, three lift stations, and your water reclamation facility totaling $96.8 million in value. Over the next 20 years, the city will need to replace a little over $20 million of deteriorating sewer lines and lift stations. The city's water system is comprised of 45 miles of distribution lines, pressure-reducing stations, pumps, and valves totaling $25.9 million in value. Over the next 20 years, the city will need to replace a little over $8 million in outdated water lines. Based on these numbers, the city will need to fund approximately $1.5 million in sewer and water line projects on average each year over the next 20 years. The Measure H tax, which is currently generating approximately $1 million per year, um, the total annual cost of the current sewer charge discount program is approximately a half a million or $500,000. The remaining half a million or $500,000 is being set aside each year for much-needed sewer and water line replacement projects. In other words, Measure H is currently funding about a half a million dollars or one-third of the $1.5 million to continually replace the city's deteriorating sewer and water lines. Recognizing these capital replacement challenges, the Measure H Sales Tax Committee has recommended that a survey be conducted in order to receive input from customers in the use of future Measure H sales tax receipts. And the timing for conducting a survey couldn't be better. And the reason for that is your consultant, Bartle Wells, is working on the latest sewer and water study. The survey results will be helpful in gauging the public's interest in certain study assumptions, especially the use of Measure H sales, sales tax receipts for the replacement of additional deteriorating sewer and water lines and the continuation of the sewer charge discount program. Staff presented a draft survey for review and comment at the Measure H committee held on June 4th. The committee made several refinements to the survey and recommended that the city conduct a survey by distributing a paper survey with the July utility bills while providing an online option for customers that would prefer that method. The city requested that, or excuse me, the committee requested that the revised draft survey be emailed to the committee members for further review and refinement, which we did. And additional edits were received from Vice Chairperson Rodman and Committee Member Cumston, which have been incorporated into the draft survey before you tonight. If approved, the final survey will have a link to the city's website that will list the active sewer and water projects that are funded by Measure H sales tax, including a status update for each project. The cost of providing an online option could be as much as $312. There are some options that could actually cost us nothing, but we're looking at the best option, um, the best bang for the buck, that's most effective. With that, we ask that the council review the draft survey and provide any input, any further comments or suggestions.
Comments? John?
Is there a deadline for our comments? Or do you want them like right now?
Right now, because he wants to...
I prefer them tonight.
Oh.
To finalize it, but we can, we can extend it if you need more time, but, yeah.
What if you're a residential and non-residential? Can you put a circle around both of them?
Sure.
Probably should say that.
We can create a category for both.
What?
You'll probably get two surveys. One, one of your, one of your non-residential and one of your residential, so.
Okay, Wendy?
Yes, um, thank you, Dave, for bringing this forward. I think it's a great idea to, once again, get the public opinion on this, to see how they want to use these funds. I think that's doing due diligence on, on our part to continue to, to explore that. My only comments on it is, this is really interesting to all of us because we deal with it a lot.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's a little wordy for the average person in, you know, that's just trying to pay their bills before they get their kids to sleep. I, you know, I, I don't know if they're going to sit down and read all of this. Um, my, I think, um, my suggestion would be the bottom paragraph on page one and the top paragraph on page two. Is there a way that we could represent that graphically rather than words? Kind of like your budget, you know, quick fact sheet that's so, so effective on the city's website. I think it would be much easier to look at a couple of graphic representations of, of the meat of that text, um, because, right, you have to really think about it and say, okay, this and this, and people might not do that. And yet, it's, it's really crucial information, so, um, those are my only comments, otherwise I think it's terrific. And I like using our water bills for that, since we're, I think that's a good use of taxpayers' money to double back, double, double up on something we're already sending out, so.
Sure, yeah, we can come up with a graph or graphs to represent that information as far as, uh, who's providing what and the other information.
And I don't know about the other, if the council members feel that way, but I just think that...
It's a good idea. It'll grab the attention and make them more likely to even take the survey.
And I was going to suggest that on number four, how satisfied are you with projects that are currently being funded, that maybe you list those projects?
Oh, that's a good idea.
It's going to get wordy again, though.
No, but it could just be real, I mean, under...
Well, like Main Street.
We, that was something the committee discussed and, and they suggested a link to the city's website that...
But a lot of people aren't going to, well, they might do that.
We have our sign down there.
We do, just on, yeah, on Main Street, but we don't have everything.
But if you put on here for the year, for this current year, this is the amount of money we spent on projects with Measure H funds. I agree wholeheartedly that this is way too long of a, of a survey. And I, for the life of me, number five escapes me, just absolutely escaped me. I love number six, it's direct and to the point. And I loved the last ones, I mean, they were just like, if you, how much, or do you, do you want to eliminate, do you, or and if you do, how much, by what? And, but I think that the whole, like even two, three, and four, those could easily be remedied in a, in a graph. This is, this is it in a picture. This is how much we, we, this is how much we raise revenue in, this is how much we spend revenue out, and this is how much our expenses should be.
Good.
I think that that's pretty clear. And then, do you still want to have a discount? If, and or can we re-limit, I mean, just the last ones are the only ones that really made sense to me. And I don't mean to be smart allocate, number six I really liked, but, I mean, who's not going to say that they, that they don't appreciate a discount? But the, but the question is, it's not whether or not we appreciate a discount, it's whether or not we should use that discount for something more than $15 in my pocket every two, two months. If, if we didn't have that discount, this is what we could do with it. I mean...
We could eliminate that $500,000.
Right, we could, we could, we could raise another $500,000, just like without raising your rates, we could raise it this much money income and we could do these many more projects each year, or this, we could spend this much more money on, on roads, on a, on a citizen advisory-approved, something to that effect, that it is a citizen, it's not up to the council to spend the money, the citizen advisories bring it forward. I mean, do you see what I'm saying or trying to get to? Anyways, I, I appreciate the work, I, I just think it's way too long.
Thank you. Thanks for the comments.
It's been written by a lawyer.
John, she's after you again.
No, I think it was, uh...
Any other comments? Okay, at this time, I will open it up to the public. Any comments from anyone in the public?
Again, I'm Sue Reese, and having worked for state government for quite a long time and everybody in this room has gotten documents from that agency over the years, uh, one of the things that they determined years ago that whatever goes into a bill, think about it, it comes out and where does it go, other than the bill? Yeah, that was something I learned a long time ago. Also, if you're going to try to do something like this, ask yourself, I use the acronym WIIFM, what's in it for me? Put yourself in the public's perception, what's in it for them, and phrase all your terminology and all their, your questions in, what's, what are they going to get from it? And the last thing is the KISS mentality, K-I-S-S. Carol knows what I'm talking about, keep it simple. And I won't, yeah, well, thank you, Patty, I wasn't going to say that. Thank you, mayor, excuse me. So those are a couple of things in terms of surveys that really help. You've got to grab their attention in order to get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else care to comment?
I appreciate the comments, Kirk Smith, on the suggestions for making the questions more effective, but overall... more effective, but overall, I think when you look at the price, it's a bargain. Look at all the money you spent for having, what, six months to have a bunch of people come together, and then you have sixty-four respondents. That's not significantly significant statistically. So in comparison, this is a bargain. But I think one of the values is that even if it goes to the trash can, people get the idea that you care, you know, you're asking them to listen. So while you refine the questions, that's one thing to keep in mind. One other thing you might want to look for is, what if you got a group of students who would go through your list and ask questions, like you take every tenth one, every hundredth person, and then you'd get something statistically significant? It would be a random sample, and then they would be more reliable. But if nothing else, sending it out says, we care. And as all the money you spend, that's pretty good.
Thank you, Kirk. Anyone else? I see no one. I'll bring it back to council. I had a comment on number five that Carol was talking about. This kind of crossed my mind, if, and I'm hoping that we're going to, our sales tax is going to continually go up. Do you think somewhere that you could mention in there how often that we do raise the rates? In other words, even if you put it like in parenthesis, as called for in contract every five years or whatever we're considering, that, because people tend to forget, and maybe if there's new people that have never gone through it, I for one hate that more than anything, when you come and say, okay, we've got a rate raised, you know? That means a lot, I think. And I'm just thinking that maybe if folks realize that that is built, because when we, some folks, I don't think, realize that that was part of the contract, that we were going to increase the rates. I think a lot of people thought when we did this sales tax that that was going to take care of everything, and we weren't going to be burdened with any more rate increases. And we are being burdened with more rate increases. And I kind of, I wish there was some way we could address that.
Would it, to make the statement that by design the enterprise funds, water and sewer, are supposed to cover their costs, so each year as the price of goods and services goes up, rates have to be adjusted accordingly. And because of the Great Recession, we've had to make adjustments accordingly to either hold back or not pass on as much increase because of the strain that the public was under at that time.
Correct. And I know we can't say all that, but if you could think of something simple, some way we could...
Making a statement that rates have to be adjusted periodically to cover costs, something to that effect?
Something, yeah, something along those lines that maybe... Okay. Wendy?
Actually, Sue's comments, I think, were a good one. And in light of that, looking at this, just a simple glance at the survey, it doesn't grab you. What about in the top, rather than City of Placerville Community Survey, which is very stately? What if we have something in a catchy font that's really kind of friendly and folksy that says, "Keep the sewer discount?", question mark, "What do you think?", or "We want to know?", or something a little...
"We want to know" is good.
Yeah, "We want to know", a little more, that grabs you, that is calling someone to action. This doesn't necessarily call someone to action, so...
They could have a little character sitting on, you know? We like, "We want to know".
Be careful, Patty. Sorry. Sorry.
Yeah, we can make the header more attractive and a statement, you know, "Keep the sewer charge discount?", question mark, or...
Something a little folksy, kind of friendly, yeah. Yeah.
Well, I guarantee people aren't going to read four paragraphs. They're not, they're not going to read the first five paragraphs at all. And so if you just went right into the graphics of, this is what Measure H raises, this is where the money, or this is how much money it spends, and this is how much money it needs, you know, and then went into your questions without too much background because it's just, they're not going to read it, and then they won't do the survey, and we really want them to do the survey.
Well, I'm just concerned that we've already, we've gone out for this tax, and they're going to see this, and they're going to go again? You know, so I think we need an explanation. I just, I don't think you should put it too...
We'll work on getting to the point quicker and try to make our, express our concerns and the opportunity to consider possibly using the other half a million that's being used for discounts for capital, you know, and what that would look like.
Thanks for your work on this, Dave.
Yes.
Very welcome. Thanks for the input.
I threw a lot of suggestions at you.
So do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we authorize staff to conduct the survey as stated in the staff report.
Have a second?
With the change, with the...
With the changes that you suggested?
Well...
With making it more catchy and colorful and...
I'm going to leave that up to the Warren Report, the Warren wordsmith-er.
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Mayor Borelli. Aye. Councilmember Clarici.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patton.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkens.
Aye.
Okay. Twelve point three, approve changes to City of Placerville welcome sign on Highway Fifty at Canal Street to add event signs. Authorize the city staff to work with the Placerville Downtown Association to make the appropriate changes and adopt a resolution authorizing the associated fees. Mr. Morris.
Thank you. On December ninth of two thousand fourteen, council awarded five thousand dollars to the Placerville Downtown Association as part of our community grant, promotions grant program. The grant was awarded to add marketing and event signage for the downtown association. Since that time, we've been working with PDA to look at what could be done, and we came up basically with two options. One was to install a new freestanding sign, which would have changeable message boards on it to advertise different events in the downtown area. That's the first scenario we looked at. If you've seen, down in Folsom, they have that on several streets. Bidwell is one example, where they advertise different events that are going on in Folsom. The second, we looked at that for quite some time, however, the problem we ran into with that was the location to put it. As you know, the area approximately from Ray Lawyer Drive going east through town is within the scenic highway corridor, and new signs, advertising signs, et cetera, are not allowed within that area. We worked a little bit with EDCTC and looked at what our options were, and after talking with them, they felt a good suggestion would be if there's a way to modify the existing welcome to Placerville sign with not, you know, significant changes, but modify that and add some sort of event notification on that sign. That would be acceptable and would be much easier to do than trying to get a new sign approved, which may not even be possible to get a new sign approved. So with that, we began to put together options for how we might design the welcome to Placerville sign. There's actually two of them, as you know, on each end of the city. The only one we're looking at right now is the one that's located down next to Canal Street on Highway Fifty. So attached to this report, we've presented some different options to you. The primary difference in most of these simply shows different colors for the signs. There is also an option presented by the Rotary Club, who most recently remodeled the existing sign at that location. They presented an option, which is shown here in your packet also. As staff looked at this, we liked the design that was done, and I want to thank Hubbard Signs, who prepared this for us and has worked with us to put this all together. And basically, what it came down to is, how can we, if we were to use this sign, how can we make that work without hopefully, how can I put this, cluttering up that sign, keeping it simple and hopefully somewhat organized and professional-looking in the process? In order to do that, our recommendation, what we came up with, which is shown in the first picture of your different options there, which basically, this doesn't completely show the letters color. The letter color is actually gold, which is the existing sign letters. Those would be, continue to be used, so that would be matched.
That would be welcome to Placerville and Old Hangtown in gold.
Yeah, the same as it is on the current sign, correct. The new signs, which are notifying of coming events, would match the rock color on the left would be the background, and then the green would be to match the background of the existing sign. So in other words, trying to tie all of that together. The Old Hangtown on the bottom of the sign would not change, that would stay as it exists currently. So as you can see, there were other options that, and these were just different ones that they presented with us. There's one that shows writing in red with the white, with the kind of a beige background, black background with white writing, and there's several like that. The other option is one that was given to us by Rotary Club. I haven't actually discussed it with them. I did go and discuss this whole concept with them earlier. This came in later, was actually dropped on my desk one day when I got back to the office, so I have not actually discussed this with them. This is a similar concept, however, there are differences to that. And you can see what is there. I did also notify Rotary that we were doing this tonight, and it was on our agenda, so they're aware of it. As part of this, we've created an application and a cost for this to happen. You can see that's attached to your Agenda's Attachment D. And the costs are spelled out as a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the standard size, which would be one sign. There's actually an opportunity for four signs there, so there'd be two on each side. So there's four opportunities that could be given at any two-week period. What we're proposing is they would be up for two weeks. If someone wanted to use the full length, they can also do that, and that would be a hundred and seventy-five dollars. And then there's other provisions in the guidelines that talk about how it would be done. If this were approved, staff would go out and do, get proposals to actually install these. We will have a sign company install them each month. They can go anywhere to have the signs made, but we would like to have a sign company that would install them. I do have an initial cost for one sign company that says they would do it for eighty-five dollars per visit, no matter how many signs they put up. So they put four signs up, that would be eighty-five dollars. So it is within that reason that we think we can do it with these fees that we're proposing within the report.
So whoever put the signs, they would bear the cost of...
Correct.
Installing, plus having the signs made?
Correct. The only other thing that we include as part of this, we recognize that there's going to be certain times when there won't be anything advertised there. Our recommendation is that we get some generic signs that may say just City of Placerville, maybe we do one for City of Placerville Recreation and Parks or something, or anything generic that we could put on there just to let them know the different things, maybe the website for Recreation and Parks. Maybe there's something for PDA, just their general website, so that there is something up there, not just a blank spot where that is at, so... I think I've covered that. Lisa Crummett, who I've worked with, is here also to answer any questions, and as well as Don Hubbard from Hubbard Signs, who helped us put this together. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Just, can I verify some one thing?
Yes.
I read through Exhibit D, and I just want to, you can clarify that this isn't a billboard, there's no products for sale, no business establishments being advertised, just strictly specific events that are being held within the city limits?
Correct, correct. And they have to be a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. This is similar, these were taken similar to what we allow for our banner across Main Street. That's the application we started with, and then we revised it to fit for this particular location.
Good. Thank you.
I have one question. It's how much does the banner across Main Street cost to rent?
Let me ask Steve, what are we currently charging? We've had to increase it a little bit due to we have to contract that out now.
It's seventy-five dollars for the week.
For one week?
For one week.
Yeah. I have a question on Exhibit D as well, the actual sign form. On number five, we're saying that for the Rotary Club, the Placerville Downtown Association, and the county fairgrounds, that they are able to schedule this up to a year in advance. Might we also want to include ourselves in that for, I mean, in the City of Placerville? I mean, I don't know, you know, when we might, but we might just want to put ourselves in there.
We could. I think that's a given, that we'll be running the program, so we can schedule, two years in advance if you want.
We might want to just put it right. I don't know.
But we could, we could, we'll be administering the program, so we can...
So if you think it's a given, then...
Yeah, I don't think there's an issue there, but we can add it in.
Okay. I thought we might want to reserve that right ourselves, too. I don't know.
Sure.
I also, another comment I have on number eleven and on the application itself, it's a silly little thing, but I think we ought to include an email. We're saying that the only way to get ahold of someone is through a telephone, that, and sometimes it's hard to play phone tag with folks and...
Oh, the information that we...
Yes, so saying, contact, it must contain a contact name, phone number, an email, and then also having a place for an email on the application might make it easier for staff to contact people. Other than that, I must, I'll weigh in, I really like, while I'm here, I think Hubbard Signs has done a great job. Attachment A, I really appreciate that the background is the color of the rock, and the letters are the color of the sign, so it's not a new element, it's not a jarring element, it blends in, but it's still very, very readable. And I think you've just done a great job harmonizing with what's there while highlighting our fabulous events and getting folks to pull off Highway Fifty and come into our town. So nice job on that.
In my unscientific but thorough survey at Heyday before I came here, I asked the waitstaff what they thought, and they really liked A as well, and they were particularly drawn to the font. They liked the font on A. But they went through it very, very judiciously, actually, and there was quite a bit of discussion about it, so, and that's actually the one I prefer as well.
Is the font different on A and B? They look the same to me.
No, there's some back in here, maybe it's the one that the Rotarians...
The font is different on Cowboys and Cornbread and Brewfest, so, I mean, to say that they like the font, it's like...
But they'd be able to choose...
Well, they like the font of the Placerville thing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that old school.
Well, yeah.
So, oh, I'm sorry, I have one more question to staff, that when we set up these guidelines, and I've read it in there, but I just want to clarify that someone reserving the sign is not allowed to put a logo or change the colors or do anything different than the green and the gray color. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, good.
But they can use their own font, their own, like Cowboys and Cornbread looks kind of cowboy-y, whereas Brewfest, they are allowed to use their own font in their logo?
We define the size, but we don't actually define the style.
So they could have, we could have both of these up at the same time?
Pardon?
We could have this look of the Cowboys and then this look of the...
The only thing we defined is the size. It's defined it, I think, about a five-inch letter is what it is, I forget the font size, but, so they couldn't go smaller than that because then it becomes not readable, we believe, from the... Right.
Yeah.
Carol? Oh, I have a lot to comment about. Okay, I have comments, too, as to what I prefer and what I'd like to see changed, but I think I'll open it up to the public right now and ask for comments from the public and take it from there.
Good evening, Mayor Borelli and council members. I'm Lisa Crummett with the Placerville Downtown Association, and I just, first of all, want to thank the city council for awarding us the five thousand dollar grant back in December, and for Cleve's patience in working with me, I probably called him way more than he wanted, because this is just something that we really feel is a necessity, to draw those millions of travelers that are traveling up and down the Highway Fifty corridor every year. My daughter just had someone visit with her here, had never been here before, said she lived in Palo Alto all while the time she was growing up. When she brought her here to Main Street yesterday, it was the first time she'd ever been off the freeway. This is what we need to sort of, you know, facilitate, is getting people interested in what we've got going on Main Street. And again, these are not just for the Placerville Downtown Association organization, it's for others within the city limits, so I think this is a real... So, I think this is a real asset for organizations to be able to advertise their events. And the integrity of the sign was very well done. I think it's a beautiful sign. We had kind of used the Folsom sign as an example, and I think someone said at the, one of the previous meetings, that it's cheesy, and it is. But ours is beautiful, and I think the integrity's there. And I'd just really like to see us be able to utilize something like this and offer it to the other organizations, the County Fair, the city, et cetera. Questions?
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else?
Why not? I don't come often enough. Thank you, Mayor Borelli and Council, Sue Reese. I'm really excited about this, it's been something that's long overdue. We've had these lovely event signs that are buried, you know, a half a block off of Highway 50. And like Lisa pointed out, the Bay Area travels between the Bay Area and South Lake Tahoe constantly. My daughter was at UOP in Stockton, and people'd say, "Where are you from?" And she'd say, "Placerville," and their eyes would glaze over, and she'd say, "Do you ever go to South Lake Tahoe?" And they'd say, "Yes." And she'd say, "Well, you know those stop signs?" And they'd go, "Oh..."
Our claim to fame.
That's right. So, having our events up there where they can be seen is so exciting, and I hope it gets accomplished. So, that's, thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Miki Kaiserman, resident of Placerville. If we're increasing, signage is really critical for not only a city, but any shop. So, when you're, if we're increasing the size of the sign, I think we should also look at the lighting and make sure it's adequate to cover that sign. And I don't know if that was contemplated when you looked at that.
It's a good comment, I didn't think about that.
I know there is lighting, but is it adequate when you increase the size of the sign to make sure that it's well lit? Because we're getting people driving by during the day as well, as well as night.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members and staff. I'm Cindy Savage, resident of Placerville. And I was just sort of backpedaling, but you didn't have Mr. Warren design the sign? My comment is sort of backlash to the other one, but you asked him to do a very creative thing on your, that goes out with the bill, and he's excellent at what he does. Maybe Wendy can, she doesn't do the sign, but maybe she could help with the design of the...
Survey.
The survey?
Because I noticed that he wasn't asked to do the sign. I just thought to make that comment, thank you.
My comment was disputed, so... Anyone else?
Of course, Kathy Lishman. Good evening. I came with a different perspective, and I hope I'm given a little more than three minutes. As I came to the meeting tonight, I crossed Highway 50 at Canal Street. The welcome sign was glowing in the sunlight. The welcome sign is beautiful, just like it is. The separate boards with the space in between, it looks welcoming, like an entrance to a state or a national park. The existing sign has a distinctive California heritage look that will be lost with converting it from a welcoming sign to an advertising board. This is not the sign to advertise events on. This is the sign to simply welcome people to Placerville. There used to be a billboard in that area that after years, we finally got rid of it. Let's not put another one in its place. I'm surprised Caltrans is allowing additional wordage. The color of the painted rock is not the color that it used to be. It should not have been painted. In fact, the natural local rock should never have been painted. It would be nice to sandblast it back to its natural stone look, but I doubt if that is possible. The welcome sign should only be shiny gold and dark green, and I heard you say that that's what it's going to be. The Goldbug Park sign at Bedford and 50 is shiny gold and dark green. My recommendation is not to change the side, sign, and I hope you do not move forward with this proposal as is. At the same time, I feel it's necessary for me to share comments about the proposal, even though I feel like I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth. The current font is the one that should be used. The Rotary proposal used the current font, although some things were painted brown, and the logos I don't think should be on there. If the event signs are added, they should go on the painted stone portion and leave the welcome sign as is. Or they could go where it says "Old Hangtown," and when there are no events, they could be removed. If the signs went on the painted portion and there were no events, they could just be taken off. It should not be on both sides, because westbound traffic won't see it. Only the city and the PDA should be able to use it. The fairgrounds for the fair, but there are lots of events at the fair. And I don't believe other organizations or nonprofits should be able to use the sign. They can use the banner on Main Street. As an alternative, I think you should wait and see if you could convince Caltrans to allow us to put the event signs at the area of the caboose, even if it takes time to find that out, if there's other channels that you can go above and above. There are a couple of illegal signs there now, and it seems to be a better, more appropriate spot. In addition, I'm surprised that Caltrans is allowing signage to be added to even an existing sign. Use the money for marketing or beautifying the area, which it definitely needs, not event signs. And it doesn't say anything about how much the new sign will cost. The city itself has so many needs that I find it hard to believe the city established a community promotions grant to other organizations. The $5,000 could easily have been used somewhere for a city project. Like it said in the letter to the beginning of the budget, "We continue to struggle to find funding for badly needed infrastructure, such as roads, park improvements, and facility repairs." And Community Pride could have used that money on the Monument Garden. "I support the PDA and appreciate the wonderful activities we have downtown. I don't really think there's a lack of attendance. Placerville is the gateway to the Sierras. That is the foot we need to put forward, not another billboard. We are not Folsom. If it can't go somewhere else, I don't think it should go at all. And I'm sorry that Community Pride wasn't part of the discussion prior to this meeting. When the community created the downtown revitalization plan and Highway 50 improvements were being designed, we made sure they improved the grace and charm of Placerville. Instead of adding to the grace and charm of Placerville, this project takes away from it."
Kathy, are you just about through?
"The welcome sign as it is, is simple, uncomplicated, peaceful, uncluttered, and welcoming. What the sign doesn't say may attract more folks than something that makes the town look thirsty in a desperate way, like any town USA."
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Dawn Hubbard with Hubbard Sign Company. Okay, I'm going to address some of her things. The sign was designed to be very professional, not to look like a liquor store or something that you got Corax signs all over. It's made to be very professional, catch the people between the stop signs, and you can see the signs on both streets, coming both directions on Highway 50. If you drive from Bedford over, you can see the signs. If you go from Cameron Park this way, you can see the signs. So, having it double-sided makes all the sense in the world. Using the brick, you might as well forget it. You got 30 seconds to catch someone's eye. When they're going through that stop sign at even 30 miles per hour, and you want to put that on the far side of that brick, you are not going to see it. There is nothing that we design that's going to take the interrogate, integrity, integrity? However, away from this sign. You know, Paul works really hard to make sure everything is top-notch. He would not put something up on the city limits or anyplace else that did not look very professional, did not hold the area. And that's why we went with the colors, because it does coincide with what's already there. The fonts, if you sit there in a dress that says you can only have this font, you cannot have any other fonts, that sign is going to start blending together. You have to have something to break it up. And the sun is going to shine on that sign, no matter if it's a few feet taller, or if it stays the way that it is. It's just a perfect location for the sign. And having the events on it is not going to take away from that sign, and it's not going to make the area look like we're desperate and we need people into the city limits. It's going to say, "Hey, this is our event, please come join us." And that's what you want. Thank you, any questions?
Thank you, Dawn. Anyone else?
Kirk Smith, Placerville, I'm not sure it'll make much difference, but here, I'll give it a shot. Number one, Patty, you told me about five years ago that there were studies that said that poll signs are not effective, they don't work. I believed you, you were effective, it's a great idea, and you know what? Since then, I, like most people, have cellphones in this room, and we've got four or five applications that tell us how to get to someplace, let alone give us a map. We don't need them. So, does any one of you, on the other hand, have a single study that said this would make a dime's worth of difference, that this will work, that people traveling up Highway 50 at 40 to 60 miles an hour are going to be able to read this? Seriously? When I was a small child, a good friend of mine in the advertising business in San Francisco, Earvin Cohen, once told me one of his rules. He said, "You've got a sign that said, 'Fresh fish sold here today.'" Ask yourself, if it's fresh fish, do you have to say "today"? Of course, it's not next week. And do you have to say it's sold up the street, down the street? No, just boils down to fresh fish. Look at all this writing you got on here that you're adding. I mean, it was already too wordy to begin with. I embrace everything that Kathy Lishman just said. Now, believe me, I'm not one of those who's going to accuse the city of principle or consistency, but look back at what you did when you made Fausel spend $9,000 to take down a perfectly innocent sign that was not cluttering the neighborhood, and put up something that was cluttering. Already, you have advertisements for events that are very effective, paid for by PDA on National Public Radio, the local affiliate. They are so effective, I didn't know there were ads. I had to ask Lisa, I said, "Those are great public service announcements." "No, we pay for them." So, they're already very effective, those work. But can you honestly say to me, "You've got a study that says somebody's going to be seeing these things"? I mean, you don't have to add most of these words. In fact, "Coming events"? I mean, what are these if they're not coming events? So, it's redundant. I just can't see it. And spending $5,000, every time I hear that, like one time, honest to God, there really was, on the park benches on Main Street, it was like $4,000 plus, so we started to say, "Okay, that's just for purchase price." And then someone in the city says, "Well, gee, you only got six of those, so that's not much money." It's like what Alan Simpson used to say to his big spending colleagues in Congress. "Five billion here, 10 billion there, after a while, it adds up to real money." In a small town, $5,000 is a lot of money. It doesn't look like this is smart business to be spending $5,000 for something you can't justify beyond these generalized statements that, "Oh, it's nice to bring people in the city." Yeah, it is. But is there any relationship between spending this $5,000 and that result? Answer, no. You haven't shown it, you don't have it, you can't show it, and you're going to have something that just mishmashes. There's another group that's paint Main Street Park, too, where we've been concerned about the way Highway 50 looks, Main Street looks on the Highway 50 side. And below, you know, Canal Street, you have a view of Main Street that I'm sorry is not something you can fix up with paint. I hate to use that usual example of a Rancho Cova strip mall, but hey, by the way, that's done very professionally, too. Every one of those signs down below is professionally done. So what? It's cluttered. And so, when you've got some grant money, you're now spending to put in some conservation methods for Hangtown Creek, thought, "Well, why don't you get some big trees, like you have in other sections of Main Street, that would help obscure that view?" And you're going to help by adding more clutter? This is not consistent with the architectural landscape of the town to begin with, it's just more clutter. It doesn't look like it's consistent with anything. Well, again, I don't think I've confused you with consistency. So, I embrace everything that Kathy Lishman said, plus others. If you've got some facts to show besides these broad platitudes and generalized statements, please tell us. We'd like to know how our money is being spent. Otherwise, it's going to make it look like politicians who've never seen a public dollar they didn't want to spend.
Thank you, Kirk. Anyone else?
Sue Taylor, I'm almost afraid to comment, because I don't know. I just try to pass off some simple design ideas. I'm actually a professional designer of buildings. I'm pretty well-known on the coast. Here, I get kind of slaughtered, it seems like, if I do make comments, but I didn't mean to... Anyway, I was really touched by what Kathy Lishman said. I didn't know really how this was going to go. I didn't really want to make any more comments today, because I feel pretty crushed from the last time. So... Sometimes, I guess we get kind of made fun of when you come into something that is home. And when I drive into Placerville, and there's certain things that make me feel like I'm home. My kids feel the same way. When things are radically changed, and maybe sometimes this is done intentionally, so that people don't care so much that it's their home anymore. And sometimes that feels like where we're going, I don't know, I hope not. And, and, when Kathy explained this sign, I thought, "She's right." You know, when the sun glisters on these letters, somebody thought about that when they built this that was connected to Placerville. And these were put, I think these are big massive timbers that these were put on, and I don't know if they have some kind of historic significance, but I'm sure there's a lot of thought that went into this sign in the first place. I hope that was, is still considered. I don't know where the council's going to go on this. I would appreciate, at least, we retain those letters that were put on there. They are, you know, not to make such a drastic change to this that when you drive by, you're going, "Ugh." You know, that just feels so different. So, anyway, I would just say that... Retain what you have, thanks.
Thank you, Sue. Any other comments? Okay, seeing no one, I will bring it back to council for more discussion. Comments, I'll start with Tricia.
I have two questions, and then I'll weigh in my comments. One, we already gave the PDA the $5,000, right? So, this is not, this is, they're spending their money on this, and we're authorizing it?
We awarded the money to them. We have to approve the expenditure, so... We haven't actually given them the money, we still hold money.
We've awarded them, so if it's their money to spend, if they don't do the sign, they can spend it somehow.
And it was for a specific purpose, for this sign.
Right, the project would still have to be approved by us, yes.
Okay. Have we looked into the caboose site? Or was it just, Caltrans isn't going to let us do anything?
We felt it was a real uphill battle in our conversations, if not impossible, to install a new freestanding sign. I'm not saying it is impossible, it may be possible to get that in, but we think it would be difficult.
Okay, so, I'll just give my comments now. I guess, in a perfect world, I would say we could have a sign similar to this in the caboose site, because it's kind of, that's where you look now. Not everybody that's traveling 50 is going to be on Main Street to see the banner sign, but everybody kind of, you're driving and you see the sign, illegal or not legal, whatever. You just kind of look, that's your go-to spot for what's coming up. So, and I think that we do need to, it's not like, "Please come to Placerville." It's like, this is upcoming, because sometimes you're thinking, "What's going to happen?" "Oh, yeah, the chili cook-off, oh, yeah, that." You just remind, that's, I think it's valuable to have that. So, in a perfect world, keep the sign that, if that is not an option. When I look at this, the one that the Rotary has, it looks like really similar to the one we have, the font's the same. And what I like about it is that it keeps "Welcome to Placerville, Old Hangtown" in one chunk, like it is now. It's not "Welcome to Placerville, da-da-da-da, Old Hangtown." So, it's, it looks the same. And then, but I don't like their inserts. I like, actually, the black one. If we could have that sign with that font with them stacked together, maybe remove "Upcoming Events," or make it small like it is in the other one, would be nice. because upcoming events proportionately looks really large to me in theirs. So, I would like that sign either remove or shrink upcoming events and then have the black interchangeable with the way it looks like that, if we couldn't keep it and do the caboose site.
Okay, Carol?
Can I make sure? So, you like the Rotary sign?
Yeah, the way it has, the font, it almost looks like we took those letters and stuck them to this sign.
But without the logos? Or do you want to include?
Oh, without the logos, you know?
It also has, the rocks are painted.
It's hard to tell with the shadows.
Everything's painted black.
Yeah, it's hard. This sign, but this, see, I can't tell, this is really dark. This is sunlight, so you can tell. This font, see how it looks like this, just, it looks like that? Yeah, and it keeps it together. But then this, their white sign is really plain and I don't like that. I think that this looks really good. The, yeah, it looks photoshopped. That's what I think.
Carol?
So, I was actually working on signs when we had the original Harveys or Harris billboard removed. And it cost us three billboards, two or three billboards down in the Weber Creek Valley. I just want everyone to realize that what we did to get rid of clutter in this canyon, what Kathy Lishman said is spot-on, I have to tell you. And I've worked, I've looked at a lot of sign sites because I was also helping when we did the revitalization signs along Main Street and then Broadway Village picked them up on Broadway. So, those signs are the event signs. To add a white reader board to this sign, I believe, is atrocious. And I don't mean to offend, I hope I don't offend Hubbard's because I'm sure they're professional sign makers. But this is not a billboard. This is a "Welcome to Placerville" sign, that's what it is. If you're, if you want to do event signs, do them somewhere else. I was appalled, and we never had an opportunity to talk about it when they painted the placarite building stone. This was placarite gold rock, and it has been overpainted with gray. It looks like any, it's like any place USA almost, except they kept the big wooden-looking timbers. I'm not even, I'm not sure that they're wooden though at this point. I don't know, because they used to be brown with white letters a long time ago. And then when Rotary updated it and they did the gold letters and they did the green, the green wood, it was really an improvement and it still looked welcoming. It still looked like home. There was talk for many years of making this the gateway to Tahoe or putting in colorful trees so it was the flaming gorge to Tahoe. But you can't do that if you're going to put more billboards in. It just, it doesn't, it doesn't lend itself to that. I just have to say, I'm really sorry because I wanted to support this because I support the events at the Downtown Association and all of the nonprofits and the people who live and work here do for our town. But this is not the place, and I will, I just, I can't support it. At the very least, the font should stay absolutely the same, but the white reader board is, to me, is just not, it's not okay. So, I needed, I didn't want to say anything because I wanted to hear what the public has to say first. But I just would caution the council about a change like this, that there may be another option that we should just maybe look at.
John?
Well, I'm kind of torn because for those who actually, those of us who actually call this town home, and it is our home, I like the sign the way it is. But then, on the other hand, we hear how we need to have more activity in town and we need to get more rear ends on Main Street and we need to do all these things. And, you know, so we eternally kind of run into this thing that's like, well, you know, we like the things the way they are. Yes, I love this town the way it is. I moved here 30 years ago plus, and I love this town the way it is. And, but I also recognize that if we also want to have all these other things, then we have to come up with a solution. I'm not sure this is the best one, but in the absence of another one, we should consider doing something. Now, I think we can probably, I always hit that. I think we can probably come to some terms with this particular sign and this particular desire to do something with this, with these, putting the events on there and have it look like something that is welcoming and yet informative. I've drive through lots of different towns, lots of different towns have all sorts of different signs. And I think what I've seen here in some of these renditions, they obviously won't be the last ones. But, you know, we've got to kind of come to terms with this at some point. You know, we're either going to promote the downtown or we're going to figure out a way to do it, and other events in town. And this is one way to do it. I'm not an aesthetic genius, so I'm not even going to try to say that a font should be one thing and a color should be another. But I think it's something that we've got to make a decision on. Not necessarily this, but on exactly how we're going to do this.
Wendy?
Well, I appreciate all the comments. I mean, lots and lots, everyone has a very, very valid point. And our task is to wrestle with this and weigh that. And I think it's important, just as John said, you know, I was born here too and I know the feeling of what it is to come into town and see that sign. It does feel like home, and I get that. That's something that's really special, and so we need to, our decision needs to preserve that and reflect that. That's a very important quantity. I think it's also important to know that, I think it's roughly 68,000 cars a day go by that spot. And that is not insignificant. 68,000 cars a day. We live and die by sales tax. And so, if we can come up with a solution that allows the public, the traveling public, like Sue's friends that had lived in Palo Alto and never been here and just know us as stoplights, that we can advertise our little city and kind of toot our own horn, so to speak, and get more people to come visit than we've done a good thing. So, the question to me then is, how do we do that? It was my understanding that the first two signs kind of honored our original sign by leaving the bottom portion as it is. And I do like that idea. The Rotary sign is a completely new sign. However, I appreciate Councilmember Wilkins' comments that when you say "Welcome to Placerville, Old Hangtown," it's one unit, and there is value in that. So, my only comment about, that if we were to do that, not with their fonts though, with our, with the fonts that were listed, and I would recommend having a recommended font list, kind of narrowing it down for people to choose from because fonts are tricky and they don't all work, especially when you're traveling on the freeway. That if we were to go with a black lettering, I would suggest it not be white. I think that's going to be a really garish.
White background.
Yeah, because white will be an element that's not in the sign. So, if we were to do the gray or the sandstone.
Is it gold? Did he say it was not reflecting, that it was supposed to be gold?
No.
It's reflecting white?
The current, the current letters are gold.
Oh, I'm talking about the event signs.
She's talking about the event signs.
Oh, yeah, so we could make them gold? Or they are supposed to be gold? Are they white?
They're white here in the, that.
Well, here they're green, over here they're black.
I'm talking about the black, the black background.
The black background, I think, so you like green letters or gold letters?
If the council liked the black background, I would suggest the, rather than white lettering on that, having it the sandstone or the gray stone.
Oh, the sand, okay.
Yeah, so it's not.
So, garish.
The white's not an element of the sum. So, those are, those are my comments.
Okay. I'll weigh in now. I absolutely agree with Kathy Lishman about that rock, and Carol mentioned it too. I really wish they could look into maybe sandblasting it. I don't know whether that would work to get it back to more, the real rock look. I also think that the way the Rotary has this sign, they're really showing timbers. And I think, you know, we're, actually, you come into town and what do you see? You see trees, pine trees and hillsides and pretty much what we are about. And I think it's timber and the rock. I think that just was a real good representation and I think that's why this, how this sign was created to begin with. And I think that the rendering that we're, is showing here is just too modern. It's just not, and several people have brought up that hometown, home. And I think that's what's wrong, is that this sign is just too modern looking for. And I think that heavy timber look and the rock is just so meaningful to our area. I heartily agree with Tricia and Wendy about "Welcome to Placerville." I like what, and bringing up, bringing up Old Hangtown. I think it all belongs together. I don't like putting it down underneath. I don't like splitting it like that. So, I think the gold letters with a sandblasted rock and a heavier, make it look more like a timber is, it would be my recommendation. And again, if that were to happen, I agree with Wendy that I don't, if you were to make the timbers, which were, I don't know why it's black, timbers are brown, that the, and maybe it's just the shadow that's causing it to be black. And I don't like the white against that. I think there should be a more of a muted color and then changing the rock. And again, I don't know what, again, it's in a shadow, so I don't know what they've got. And I would like to call attention to the council that I have had a phone call from the members of DAR are wanting to know where the signs are that used to be out there. The service organization signs. And I think we're looking for them. They're kind of MIA right now, we can't find them. But a lot of these organizations paid for those signs and they would like representation there. So, that's something we need to think about too. I'm not, I'm certainly not saying put them on this sign because I don't, they were on a separate sign, if you all remember, and then that was, it was moved when.
It was a little Christmas tree.
Yeah.
So, anyway, that's just my thoughts.
Can I chime in a little bit? I just have one.
Sure.
Another thought, actually, I have a couple of things that I forgot. One of them is the price. Councilmember Thomas brought up 68,000 cars that travel the site every day. A billboard, I don't know how much the chambers rents theirs. Lisa Crummett might know how much they rent their half billboard down in Cameron Park, but I guarantee it's probably not 175 bucks. So, that needs to be, I think we should, if this is going to happen, we need to charge fair market value for it. The other consideration I would make is, going back to what Mickey Kaiserman said about lighting, imagine if you would, on the rock itself, if there was an overhead light shining down and that was your billboard portion or your event sign, just there. Leave the sign the same, leave "Welcome to Placerville, Old Hangtown." Leave the elements of the sign, the three timbers, but use the rock as your backdrop for your event. What would, and then make that event sign green with gold letters. I mean, I don't know, Wendy's the graphic artist, but I think that at least that would not corrupt the integrity of the sign because I do think the sign is important to a lot of people. Not, and I'm not minimizing the value it has to down, to businesses. But I do think that we also need to remember that there are other people in this town besides businesses and how to, how do we accommodate all of them to the best of our ability? So, that being said, I would be able to vote for overhead light coming down rather than downlight going up on the sign, at least where the event is, the event sign.
But that would just be for nighttime, so how would you remedy daytime?
You don't need light at daytime.
No, 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 you said to put the events under, over there. Is that what, maybe I misunderstood. You said use.
On the rock.
You just want the rocks showing?
I would hang a sign where the rocks are, and maybe Dawn Hubbard might address this. Maybe, I mean, I know that it's on the far side of Highway 50, I know that part. But if you put a sign on, against the rock, then when there's no event, you still have the rock to look at. And then, and then, I know in Tahoe, they use a lot of this, it's a shielded light that shines down rather than in the ground shining up at an event sign. And so, the whole sign is illuminated, anyways, just a thought.
So, Carol, would you propose that maybe just one event is advertised rather than two? If we did that, that way it would be large enough to be seen.
For those short seconds that you have.
Right, and then what if, because of only one event at a time, what if we use it like, how long is a banner up? Is it for a week?
One week.
One week, what if we do one week at a time on the, on the sign?
But we charge accordingly. This is, yeah, this is an expensive area, and I think that we need to look at that. It's not $175 a week or whatever. I mean, I don't know, I don't know. I remember looking at, oh, Lisa knows. Lisa, can you help us out here?
Yes. The sign that the chamber uses down off of Cambridge, first of all, it's not lit, so it's only seen in the daytime. Two-thirds of it has Thompson's Toyota advertising on it. And that little one panel on the side is $100 a week.
$100.
$100 a week. This is a two-week program for $175, right? So, there's value in that. And I did want to mention, you know, the tone of the council, I'm not sure how this vote's going to go. But in terms of some of your other ideas, first, for the Rotary sign, to have the panels at the bottom, the event panels at the bottom of the sign, that wouldn't be valuable to the advertisers because you really wouldn't be able to see them, especially traveling west. There's a concrete retaining wall on the freeway and a little railing on the top. You can see from the middle of the sign up, which is about where those inserts are recommended to be. My personal opinion on putting something over on the rock is there's obstacles, there's flagpoles, it's on the inside, and I just think visually, it might not be worth it to the organizations to have it there because I think it's going to be very difficult to see. I mean, it's something we'd have to take back to our folks if that's what you decide. But I'm just not sure people would find that to be an optimal position for the events, so.
I have a question for Lisa. You said it wouldn't be valuable, is it going to hang down lower than Old Hangtown? Because we can see Old Hangtown.
No, where the slats on this first design, the green, you know, on beige or gray or whatever color that is, the slats are in the middle of the sign. And the idea was to rebuild kind of the, from two-thirds up, you know, if you see on the old sign down in the corner of the picture, there's three slats. They'd have to rebuild those top two slats into one sign in order to accommodate the weight and whatnot for those. But, and so it was easiest to leave the Old Hangtown sign down at the bottom. I understand the desire to have that word, those words up near the Placerville. But again, if you put the events down at the bottom, they're not going to be seen and advertisers wouldn't want to spend all the money to invest in the sign and all that for it not to be viewable.
Well, if you, if you didn't write "coming events," you could raise the whole thing. I mean, you could raise it all so that it would, it wouldn't be down as far as Old Hangtown is on this first rendering.
If you've ever driven, because I've done the test a couple of times, the sign's really visible mostly heading toward Tahoe eastbound. On the westbound side, again, because of that concrete wall and the little wrought iron fence, not so much, plus it's on the opposite side of where you're driving and whatnot. So, really for there to be a good position, it needs to be in the middle of the sign, so.
Can I, I have a comment. When we were looking at the In-N-Out Burger sign and that whole shopping center, one of the things that the planning commission did, and Dave Razzleton of Western Sign was amenable to it, was we actually drove up and down Highway 50 and he hung a piece of plywood up in the air so we could actually see what Lisa's talking about, whether you can see it, whether it's big enough, whether it's too, you know, not big enough, whatever. Because, you know, we look, we say, the sign can only be 60 square feet or whatever it can be, those are the rules, but you have no idea if that's going to work. Like Dawn said, you know, you have so many seconds to see that size. But it would be really cool, I think, for us, or for whoever's going to make this decision, which is ultimately going to be us, if we could have some, a site visit and actually look and see. I mean, if you guys want to do that, or if you just want to make a decision tonight.
Well, we can see Old Hangtown, I know because I see it.
Westbound, she's talking about westbound now and going, looking across that longitudinal barrier. And that's diff, I mean, I think I understand.
But I think it's most effective on the people, a sign always on the side you're driving at. I mean, it's nice if you get these people, but it's meant.
You can see it coming around the curve and you can definitely see "Welcome to Placerville." And again, all those same letters, those gold letters are going to be preserved and reused and moved up. So, the glistening will still be happening.
That's true. We should make some little signs and say, whatever the next coming events are, we could just put them on there and drive by.
So, what they look like?
I mean, it won't look like the sign because there's going to be other things. There was other, I'm sorry, I'm. There was other, I'm sorry, I'm talking over here. Sure. I'm sorry. I don't get that, to make that decision. Patty, can she say something?
Oh, yes.
Hi, I'm Dawnigan.
We're just kind of changing all the rules tonight. We're having a little discussion here and there's no other way to do it. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Okay. We did the Shingle Springs Monument sign up at the 76 gas station. That's exactly what we did. Every sign company basically does what Dave Razzleton does. If you got a sign, you basically figure out where it's going to go, how many people are going to see it. And if you put it in the wrong place, people are not going to see it. If you put it on the far of the rocks, people are not going to see it. That, that's the problem with the rocks being on the far side by the KFC center. The sign has to be a minimum of five inches, just kind of like the Caltrans signs, because you have to be able to read the first line. You know, basically you want to know what it is and the date. That's it. That's all you care about. If you start messing with the fonts, you can say, okay, here's 15 fonts, you have to do or use these fonts. Then that's what you do. But you have to be very, very careful not to make the signs so, you know, everything's the same because it's not going to draw. And you, you got to have a little bit of difference, but still make the signs look like the part of the original sign. Does that make sense? So the lighting, we can do whatever. I mean, we can add more lights, we can do, you know, that part's not a big deal. But the signs on the bottom, if you notice in the one picture, the shadow actually goes over the Old Hangtown. If you put the events there for part of that day, you are not going to see what's going on in Placerville. It's just a fact. So being in this, the middle portion is the only way, honestly, that that's going to work. The people, I mean, I do this all the time. I have lived in this county, in the city, for 50 years. I know what you guys are all talking about. But I've, we've done signs for over 30 years. And you do, you had a stop sign, you got so many seconds, your eyes will go to where the event is, you're going to see Brew Fest June 27th. That's all you know. You have to go get your ticket. You know, you tell your friends. So that is why it is really important that it's where it's at and not at the bottom. Any questions?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Well, I was going to, one, one second while it's still on my mind or I'll forget. You're talking about what you observe in just a very short time.
Mm-hmm.
And that, I, that could be what's confusing to us because you've got on your, on the first rendering, you've got these two signs and both of them have a lot of stuff on there. And I don't think anybody's going to read 11 to four. Or even downtown Placerville under Brew Fest. I, I'm not sure that that would even show.
And you know what? But it may not. But you know what? You have, you have all the stop signs right there. And say if you see Brew Fest June 27th and say there's other information, I need that, you're going to flip around and you're going to go look at it. I do it all the time. If you, the idea is to get the main event and the date. That, that's really the biggest thing. You want to know what's going on in the city of Placerville and when it is.
Well, that's why the rotary sign, I think that what they've got on there is, is so much more clear and why a lot of what we're saying preferred.
Well, you can change the, you know, what you allow and what you don't allow on the signage. But then at the same time, you're telling some organization, I'm sorry, I know you feel that's important, but we're not going to allow it. So that's where you have to kind of watch that you're not over, kind of overstepping, saying you're a good organization, but we're not going to allow you to put that on the sign. If they're going to pay to, for two weeks, you know what? It's really up to them on what they want to put on that sign. You know, all we can do is give them the guidelines.
Yeah, but that, it, it does affect the sign itself. I mean, it, it's whether you're going to allow clutter or not. And I'm, I just feel like too much word wording is clutter rather than just the stark, you know, like I'm saying on the rotary sign, it's just the event, this is the date and that's it, you know?
But what happens, say, if you got, you got Brew Fest and they say, where do I get a ticket from? There's no information, you don't know if it's Placerville Downtown Association that's putting the event on. I mean, you kind of need to have something to where if somebody wants more information and like the PDA's information, even though it's small, at least you know where you have to go to get those tickets.
I heartily disagree. I think they can call the chamber or they can Google it or they can whatever. I, I just think too many, too many words is too much. Tricia, I interrupted you. You had a question for.
No, I had a comment. I understand the value of promoting and our awesome events and we want people to come to them, but to me, that's secondary to keeping the homey feel of Placerville and really keeping the font. That's why I'm going back to this one. It's the welcome to Placerville and the font we're familiar with. It's clump, it's, it's basically what we're familiar with, just a little bit upgraded. I mean, it's a little change, but it, we're used to seeing that. We're not used to seeing welcome to Placerville and this and then, and then this and then maybe there's this old piece. So to me, that, a first priority for me would be to keep the, I'm home. And it's a little different, but it's the same. It's, it's the sign I know is just a little bit different, not chopping it up. So, I mean, if it means that they don't have a little, they have a little less exposure from people over here, then that's a sacrifice I'm willing to make just to keep it nice looking.
Okay, so here we are. What are we going to do?
I, I think we need to look at another option.
I think we need to.
And so I'm going to make a motion. I move that staff bring back another option that preserves the welcome sign as is and shows one event on the rock lit from above for us to consider.
Well, we. Okay, discussion.
Sure.
We had a lot of things presented besides that. That was our motion.
Would, would that include looking into, to keeping the, the option of the existing caboose sign, that area? Is that a possibility?
I mean, I could certainly, I certainly would be amenable to, to amending my motion. I mean, being on the Transportation Commission though, I mean, we know that.
Has it been decided that it's, should we just give up?
It's a scenic corridor.
Yeah.
It's a scenic corridor. So adding a methers sign where, when you're just changing.
Right.
The wording of an existing sign is not nearly as difficult.
It is pretty impossible. It really is.
So we can declare it impossible and move on.
Well, there's, there's actually two issues. One is the scenic corridor designation. The other thing is, is that Caltrans, they didn't used to do this, but they're a lot more aggressive about not having as many things, you know, there's already enough traffic signs like turn here or don't turn there, stop up there.
On Highway 49 at Jackson.
Yeah.
The Jackson and Auburn signs.
Yeah. And so they're already very harsh on people wanting to add more visual sort of distractions to, to, and especially if you sit there and think about, okay, the sign's kind of there. You see the sign when you come in, it's there. But the caboose is a little bit kind of more this way and they really get excited.
Westbound, you wouldn't see it.
Yeah, you wouldn't see it at all westbound, but even eastbound, you, they really get excited if they, you start to pull people's eyes away from what they're supposed to be doing, which is driving. So it's going to be a tough haul, but the scenic corridor thing would be enough to.
Yeah. But Patty, what, what?
I'm just, you know what? I'm wondering is if we, and I don't know whether this would be legal or not, if we, I don't want to break any Brown Act, if we need, could meet with these folks and discuss, I mean, they've heard what we've said up here, but do you think that there needs to be more?
Well, we could have our committee, which is council member, Vice Mayor Patton and Councilmember Wilkins, meet with them and.
Meet with who?
With the Hubbard sign.
Didn't we just do all this tonight?
With them. And come back with a recommendation based on this council discussion? That's.
I just, I just think that we need more discussion. And I, if, what I'm afraid of is if we don't have a meeting of the two groups, that then we're going to have this again.
Would that be a possibility?
So, but she's already told us that this, basically this one's not going to work because you can't see it, right?
Well, but I like Carol's suggestion that maybe we go out and, you know.
On-site.
On-site and do an onsite.
And she also said that the, the rock one wouldn't work because no one's going to see it because it's too far off. So she has already eliminated the rotary.
But don't forget, she's a, she's the sign company. It's her job to do promotions. That's her job, right? So she's going to maximize the exposure.
Right.
That's what, that's what you pay her to do.
So she gave us our, her professional opinion on signage.
And it's up to us to choose to take that opinion and either go with it or we look at something else or we ask them to come back with something else. Because quite frankly, I wouldn't vote for any of them the way that they're presented tonight. I don't know if, you already had some issues, even though you like this one, that if, if we gave it back to them to say, well, maybe you could do something listening to all of us, including a sign on the rocks. I happen to like the one, I mean, that's.
That was your suggestion, yeah.
But, but that doesn't mean that a professional sign maker might not come up with something else. I don't know. I, I don't know. I, I just, you know, that is what she does. That's, that's what they do is they tell you how to maximize your dollar and that's what you're paying for.
So I'm going, I'm going to amend my motion.
Okay.
That Vice Mayor Patton and Councilmember Wilkins meet with representatives of the PDA and the sign company to further flesh this out and, and bring this back to council.
Okay.
With other options based on council's discussion.
I say no.
Would it be open to public or anybody else to come? I mean, if, if somebody else wanted to come to that.
Sure. That's up to you guys.
That's up to you guys to decide.
Sure.
And, and I, I mean, even our inputs, I would like you to carry forth.
So you want us to bring back something similar to these pictures that depict what we would like to see?
Everything you've heard us talk about.
And they say would work with their.
What you've heard us talk about tonight, what, what our idea is, you know.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
As long as I'm Friday.
Susan, don't leave. Okay, this really isn't a money issue.
Nope.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yes.
Okay.
Forward to seeing what you come up with. It'll be fine.
Okay, moving on. Council reports from other agency meetings. Transit, Commissioner Wilkins.
He did not have a meeting.
Transportation, Councilmember Thomas.
Not yet. Nope, no meeting.
LFO, Councilmember Patton.
No meeting.
SECOG, John.
We had a meeting and there's actually something and I'm desperately trying to find it here. It actually, it's kind of the joining of two things. Cleve has sent his update for last week and mentioned a SECOG County Land Use and Sales Tax Sharing Project, which SECOG is, is helping us with and, and is sort of a, kind of a, looking at ways to maybe work out things across. Whoa. Whoa.
Was it something you said? Probably.
Man.
It's just us folks.
Anyway. Okay, yes, for those of you at home.
I hope everybody's still watching us on TV.
Actually, my daughter sometimes watches this, yes. In any event. And there's really two things. One is this SECOG thing, which I think is really cool and, and we'll be getting more on it as it kind of comes along. It's still very, in the very, very, very early phases. But then there was also an item at the SECOG meeting about, it's not redevelopment, okay? It's not redevelopment, redevelopment is dead and gone. But for cities that had active and responsible redevelopment agencies, they tried to figure out other ways to sort of do what they needed to be done in different ways. And there's actually already provisions in this property tax code regarding how you can promote development in either brownfields or greenfields in a responsible way. And it really would not have anything to, I, I, I'm massacring this and I will bring more back because they just did a presentation to us and, and, and we had to get going. But it wouldn't apply to downtown, but it has some potential applications for this area that the SECOG folks are looking at. Yeah, yeah. Anyway, I will, I will endeavor to get more coherent on this, but I wanted to share it with you.
I think what you're referring to was that the enhanced infrastructure financing districts?
Something like that, yes.
Yeah, that West Sacramento is doing.
Yes.
We met, and just so you know, we met with our former redevelopment consultant to talk about the opportunities that we might be able to recognize through these, this new law, which is the enhanced infrastructure financing districts, so.
And they're doing it in West Sacramento.
Right.
Around the area where Rayleigh's Fields is and all of that development. So it just looked really intriguing to me and obviously you've already talked about it, so it could be something as part of this process that, you know, could be kind of come together. So anyway, that, that was it. Yes.
That's good news, I think.
Well, it's an interesting thing. Yeah, I wouldn't get it, yeah.
Okay, SEDCOR would be me. We have the Small Business Accelerator Workshop tomorrow here at Town Hall from 9:00 to 2:30. Again, I would encourage anyone and everyone, I don't care how long you've been in business, this is a great review and they do a really nice job. And then the only other thing I would like to say is that we all attended the fair or the opening and the, the parties and whatnot. And I thought it was a great fair. And again, thanks to Fair Association. I also am going to take this opportunity right now to announce that the city of Placerville is having its annual spring free community cleanup day on Saturday, June 27th, from 8:00 to 1:30 at the Placerville Station. That's on Mosquito Road at the Park and Ride. Eldorado Disposal is providing free bins for depositing trash and it must be bagged. General recycling, yard waste, metal objects and appliances, parentheses, no items with freon. Snowline Hospice will be onsite to accept, accept tax deductible donations of gently used items and electronic waste. And it says, please note, the following items will not be accepted. Tires, paint, mattresses, oils or lubricants, gas tanks, propane or oxygen, all household hazardous waste, fluorescent lights, car or household batteries and smoke detectors.
They're not taking fluorescent lights.
No. They're all, they've all got that stuff in them that you can't sell. Anyway, anybody that's interested and they usually do a bang-up job and we, and we thank them for having that. Okay, request for.
Mayor, can I, maybe I heard you wrong, but the SEDCOR workshop.
Yes.
Is actually on Thursday, not tomorrow.
Oh, did I, what did I say?
I think you said tomorrow.
I'm sorry.
There it is, Thursday, the 25th.
Thursday. Okay, thank you for correcting me.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, Thursday, SEDCOR, and we also have it on our website, if they'd like to check any more details.
You do need to register for that.
Yeah, right, okay. All right, requests for future agenda items, council members? Okay, city manager and staff reports. Wow.
Madam Mayor, if, if.
We're all going on vacation.
Staff would like to give a brief update on the, on the Main Street.
We'd appreciate that.
Very brief, um, just really quick, just wanted to give everybody a heads up about what we're, is gonna come down the chute related to Phase 2. As you know, the project for Phase 2 is out to bid. We did, effectively yesterday, we did push back the bid opening by two weeks to July 16th. The reason being is that we're noticing that quite a few contractors, local and otherwise, are very busy, and so we're trying to give the contractors a little bit more time to get the bids together, do the proposals, and turn in, and hopefully get some more bids. Currently, we only have one plan holder on the plan holder list, and so I'm kinda getting nervous, I'd like to see more bids than that, obviously. And following that, if we don't end up receiving competitive bids, one thing to keep in mind is that we did look at, okay, well, what would be the best scenario to obtain competitive bids? And basically, basically, a lot of it is attributed to timing, releasing of the bid documents. We all worked as feverishly as we could, both city staff and REY, to get the bid documents out, but the best turnout is always when you send things out to bid in the winter, and looking ahead on the PDA schedule and everything else, one thing that we could look at as an option, if we don't get the bids we want and it doesn't fit within the project budget, is we could just defer and re-release the bid documents out for bidding in the beginning of January, syncing up much like what we did on the Phase 1A contract, which did, which did have nine bidders. So, six or nine, I can't remember how many it was, but it was certainly more than one. And so, that is something that we could look at, also, as a bonus to that, it certainly impacts far less PDA events. The current deferment of the bid opening to two weeks did reduce the overlap of PDA events by an additional event. We do miss the PDA Craft Fair that's scheduled for August 23rd by starting of work on August 24th, but it does hit a fair amount, you know, at the end of August, as far as the Hangtown Car Show and the PDA. Now, the thing to keep in mind, and I apologize, I need to make this more brief, but the thing to keep in mind is that this is night work, I mean, as you saw, we come in through the night, we do our work, and we try to button it up as best as we can and get out of there by 8:00 AM. And not everything worked as far as, you know, doing that every day with the water project, but utilities are hard, it's gonna be a little bit easier when you're just doing mostly surface treatment improvements. So, just wanted to let you guys know where we were going with that and what kind of options we have.
Good, thank you.
Carol?
So, PDA will meet the first week in July, will you, assuming that we're in the exact same place we're in right now, we have one, will you please present it to them and just say, "These are the options we're looking at"? Is that?
Absolutely.
We're already scheduled to do that, yes, to meet with them, yep, we already talked about it.
Is there any challenge about laying asphalt in the middle of January, though? I mean, it's not really the optimal time to be, you know, at least that's my experience.
Excellent question. It goes out to bid in January, the first working day would actually be right around March 14th, and there's a fair amount of work that has to go on prior to being able to do the grind. You know, we have to do the form, the formwork and everything for the bulbouts, and, you know, there's various steps, we have to move the fire hydrants, we have to get the utilities connection set up that way, possibly, also possibly the potential of doing the reservoir water loop. We have a, a line that goes currently underneath a building, and we're looking at looping with reservoir street, so, there's a, a fair amount of work that can be done in advance of that.
That's it? Okay, upcoming items, items tentatively scheduled for the next regularly-scheduled city council meeting on July 14th include resolution of intention zoning ordinance, small municipal separate storm drain slash sewer MS4 permit. Whoa. Escatton final map amendment, water and sewer capital improvement charge, and body worn camera update. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting to July 14th, and I'm going to take this time to remind everyone that our July 28th meeting has been canceled, and so the next meeting after that will be on August 11th.